I'll let. All right, you guys, Gwen's experiencing some technical difficulties. We've done that before. She's going to try to log in from her cellphone, which will work that way she can hear and speak in the meeting.
Are we ready, Bridgette?
One second, I'm just gonna check a couple things. We are ready now, Commissioner.
Thank you. Good afternoon, and what a beautiful afternoon it is. I called to order the Hamilton County Board of Commission staff meeting of June the 29th. Good afternoon, Madam Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
And we also have with us our clerk of the board and our county administrator. Welcome to both of you.
Thank you.
We have quite a few items on our agenda, some great items, but before we begin, I would like to ask that we have a moment of silence. Normally, we do it on Thursday, but prayer is always in order when it's in need. And so just a moment for a six-month-old who was tragically, I won't say killed because I don't know that tragically died, who was not able to reach their destiny, first of all, just a couple days ago, and also the condo collapse in Florida and all the victims of that. Hopefully, we'll have more survivors, but the ones that were impacted directly and also indirectly with the families. So if we could just have a moment of silence, that would be great. Amen. Thank you. So our first item on the agenda is our Black Music Month proclamation. Vice President Reese, take it away.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. And I think we got some guests. Hopefully, I don't know, Bridgette, if they're gonna be able to get on. But June is also Black Music Month, and I have a proclamation as we are. This is the last meeting we have before July. And it says, whereas Black Music Month was first inducted on June 7, 1979, by President Jimmy Carter as a national observance to recognize and celebrate the historical influence African Americans have had on the music industry and in shaping American pop culture. Whereas Black Music Month, also known as African American Music Appreciation Month, is celebrated throughout the whole month of June each year to recognize black artists, writers, songs, and albums that have inspired music lovers. African American artists have given their voice and sound through blues, R&B, jazz, gospel, rock, rock and roll, rap, hip-hop, and other genres. Black music not only has the creativity to tell stories, but it also has the ability to uplift and encourage, inspire, and bring about social change in the continuing fight against racial inequities and injustice. Whereas black music artists have always impacted across all races, creeds, colors, religion, sexual orientation, and identities. Black Music Month celebrities have a rich heritage of inspiration, innovation, that have shaped us through music. It is also a time to honor and remember those who have made contributions to the music industry and are no longer with us, but their legacies live on. Whereas we celebrate our own Otis Williams, the Isley Brothers, Bootsy Collins, and the late Dr. Charles Fogle this year, who are all from Hamilton County for their musical contributions nationally and internationally. And then it goes on to say, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Hamilton County do proclaim this 29th day of June 2020 as Black Music Month Appreciation Day in all of Hamilton County and is signed by each of us as commissioners. And I just wanted to add, Madam President, that one of the reasons that they came up with this month is because of so many artists, many had gone on, but they weren't, they had to sing with their backs to audience. They had to go on what they call the chitlin circuit. They had lost their royalties to some of their songs, and we still hear those things today. Here in Hamilton County, we're blessed because we have some of the top artists that have gone on to sell records internationally and nationally, won Grammys, and were groundbreaking. Otis Williams, many may know from King Records, who is a legend and icon in the music world. But again, didn't get what maybe some of the artists get today because of the times that he was here. Bootsy Collins, who we all know, and he's a Rock and Roll Hall of Famer from this area. The Isley Brothers, who went on to win Grammys as well, from Lincoln Heights. They're so excited when you talk about Lincoln Heights. And Dr. Charles Fogle, one of the first gospel artists from this area to win a Grammy and impact the gospel community in terms of that. So those are just some. We have so many others. We have those in opera, Lantian Price, and so many that people don't know are from here. Were born here, were from this area, and have really made a huge impact in the music world and internationally as well. So I don't know, I thought we had, I'm not sure if they're on, Bridgette, but Madam President, we had Christine Brown. I think she was trying to get in, the sister of Dr. Charles Fogle, and Kent Butts, and Otis Williams. Kent Butts is the son of Otis Williams, and Otis Williams were getting on. So I don't know if they've been able to get on yet, but they wanted to at least come on and say thank you. Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Commissioner Dreehouse. Again, this was signed by all three of us.
Thank you so much, and thank you for bringing this forward so timely. And I know often we'll hear that music soothes, and I won't say what, it says the savage soul, but I would say the troubled soul. That music can do that, and also music can unite people together. So thank you so much for not allowing us to miss that. Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yeah, same. I'm glad we're doing this and recognizing, you know, the rich, rich history that we have here in this region for music and the contributions of African American artists to that rich history. So glad to sign on and glad we got it in under the wire, as we often do with some of these resolutions, getting them right in on time. So I was very happy to support this resolution and the proclamation.
Thank you, and I'll let Bridget look one more time to see if those two guests are on, Bridget.
Thank you, Madam President. Yes, so we have several guests, but those names aren't showing up. So if you are supposed to be on this presentation, if you could raise your hand. I have a telephone number that could be it. Or we got KB. We're gonna promote Mr. Butts. And Mr. Butts, if you could unmute and share your video. He is unmuted on my end, so Mr. Butts, if you'd like to unmute and address the board?
Hello?
Yes.
There you go.
You hear me? Hi, how you doing?
Fine, thank you.
My pleasure. I'm Kent Butts. I have my father here, really. I'm not really here for myself. I have my father, Otis Williams, here, and he just wanted to say a little something to you guys. Thank you all for that you've been doing and what you have done for our Black History, Black Music History Month. So I'm gonna kind of like get out of the way, though I appreciate all of you all, so he can say a little something to you.
Only if he sings. Okay.
How you doing?
Great.
It's been a long journey for me. To this day, I had the opportunity to more or less get the ball rolling with music that we hadn't heard quite before, and that was doo-wop. And after doo-wop came, I guess, what were we doing? Blues? And there was jazz. And that was it for blacks mainly. But with the coming of Hearts Made of Stone, which was my record, my, in high school, I came up with a hit record called Hearts Made of Stone for King Records. And it was such a joy for me because I hadn't been involved in music. I was a football star with through high school. And so it was really a treat for me to get into this. Black History Month has made, we know what music is to the world. And Black History has its place, and we hope that people understand. Music is music. Music is music. But we are here to celebrate Black History Month. And that's what I feel, a very important part, like I said. I feel like I did my part. And the actors and recording artists and movie stars, they all had a part of this. And I had a part of recording and writing some songs that the movie stars came up and copied. And when they did that, it just blew everything out of the water. And so we were very glad to do as much as we possibly could at the time. And we want to thank you for having this program today. It's important, and we want you to know that we all love you, and that's what music is all about. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Commissioners, I believe we just were joined by Christine Brown as well. Christine, you're unmuted.
Madam President, before we go to Christine, I wanted to, Kent Butts, his son, I meant to also properly introduce him. He is the co-chair of the Cincinnati Music Ambassadors for our area, along with Patty Collins, Bootsy Collins' wife. So I wanted to make sure I be properly introduced to him as well.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Brown?
Yes, I'm here, but for some reason, my camera is not coming on.
We can hear you.
Okay. So that's part of it. Okay, I'm clicking, trying to get the video, but it's, for some reason, it's not coming up.
So did you want to share a few words? Sorry that the picture is not coming up, the video. Okay?
I can share. You want me to share a few words about my brother?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, well, my brother was Charles Fogle, and he founded the Charles Fogle Singers. And he was minister of music at Lincoln Heights Missionary Baptist Church for over 40 years. And his group won a Grammy in the 80s, and he was in collaboration with Reverend James Cleveland, who was his mentor. And he received the Grammy in the 80s. He also received several nominations for the Grammy. He received nominations for the Stella Awards. He was inducted into the Gospel Music Hall of Fame. And he recorded about 15 recordings, and four of them became gold. He did a lot of things with the community. He also was on the Board of Directors for Reverend James Cleveland's Gospel Music Workshop of America. And he was also over all of the chapter reps, which were the chapter presidents all over the U.S. and in some foreign countries. And he was just a person who loved gospel music. He loved the Lord, he loved church, and he loved gospel music. I don't know if, I don't want to just keep talking, but there's so many things I could say about him, all of them being very positive.
Yes, such great things. I remember him well. I'll pass it over to Vice President Reese, but thank you so much for your comments.
No problem. Thank you for inviting me to come and speak about him.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Brown, and thank you, President Dumas, Commissioner Dreehouse. As you can see, these stories that people have that are from here and went on to win Grammys and Stella Awards and international awards, those are the stories we want to continue to capture, and that's what the Black Music Month is all about. And so I just want to thank them for being on and thank you all for recognizing this month, passing this month, and looking forward for us doing something more permanent where other people can come and hear, learn these stories, see these stories, and know that all of this came from our county, Hamilton County, all of this talent that was born here and came and birthed out of here that can also help the future performers of today's society. So thank you very much, Ms. Brown, and thank you, Mr. Otis Williams, who is a, those are both, Otis Williams, a living icon, and certainly Dr. Charles Fogle, who is an icon, and of course Bootsy Collins, Rock and Roll Hall of Fame, and the Isley Brothers, who won so many awards and Grammys as well. So thank you so much for this, and I appreciate the support.
Thank you so much. And I guess since Mr. Williams did not sing for us or do any doo-wop, I have to go back and listen to Hearts Made of Stone. So, but I thank everyone for being here. Thank you, Vice President Reese, for inviting those guests. It was just right on time, so thank you so much. We will move forward now to our next item on the agenda. Item number two, which is an update on the operations from Cincinnati Animal Care Humane Society, Carolyn Evans, who is Executive Director. Welcome.
Hi, good afternoon. That's a tough act to follow. That's pretty. Thank you, Madam President, and Commissioners Dreehouse and Reese for making time on the agenda today for us to talk about the Hamilton County Animal Shelter. It's something that we know is important to so many people in our community and also to us, as was just mentioned. My name is Carolyn Evans. I'm the Executive Director of Cincinnati Animal Care Humane Society. And I'm here with Troy Taylor as well, who's the Chief Dog Warden for Hamilton County. And because I know that this audience extends beyond just those on the Zoom meeting, and for the benefit of those who may not understand, may not know or understand our role within the county, we get so many questions about this still today. I just wanted to clarify and quickly just mention that we are a nonprofit humane society that holds the county contract to provide animal services for Hamilton County. So we run the county animal shelter and also dog warden services. And our shelter is where all the strays from the county should come so that we can work on trying to reunite them with their families when they're lost. And also, our officers, under Chief Taylor's direction, are the ones that investigate cases of animal cruelty and neglect and abuse. We house the animals at the county facility, which is here in Northside. And this is a facility that many people in the community are familiar with. Over the years, was run for many decades, actually, by SPCA Cincinnati. It's the facility on Colrain Avenue, and that is the county facility that Cincinnati Animal Care is now operating out of. We've been in the position of providing animal services for the county just about a year now, since August 1 of 2020, which was a very exciting transition for us. It was a quick transition, but it was exciting, and we're really pleased with the warm reception that we received from Hamilton County. But this is a great time for us to give you just a bit of an update of some of the things that have been happening at your county animal shelter. So I'm gonna turn it over to Chief Taylor briefly, who's gonna talk a little bit more detail about what dog warden services look like for Hamilton County.
Hi, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
The Dog Warden Department have a staff of 11 officers, providing 24/7 service, 365 days a year. We respond to calls for stray animals, welfare checks, cruelty, neglect, investigations, and registration, dog tag, license enforcement. In the past 10 months since we've been here, we've responded to more than 7,747 calls from Hamilton County residents. Our approach is a community-based model versus site and inbound. We work with the community by going to every call with the intention of understanding the situation and implementing the appropriate solution for that situation. Our goal is not to take people's animals, but rather to help people be more responsible pet owners through education and program support. That said, there are certainly times when there is a legitimate concern for the welfare of an animal that requires removing that animal from a home or an unsafe situation. To be able to adequately serve the community in this way and protect animals, we've created the Humane Investigations Task Force, which is headed by Captain Brandon Corcoran, whose purpose is to focus on investigations and hold people accountable for known animal abuse and neglect. Very briefly, though, I would like to say, you know, with our commitment to helping keep animals with their families, I want to share some thoughts as we approach this holiday weekend. The 4th of July is coming up, and animal shelters traditionally get overloaded. We expect this to be our busiest intake week of the year with animals getting lost and injured. I'm asking that, you know, we all do our part to help keep our animals safe, keep them at home, you know, over the weekend. You know, try not to have them out during the fireworks and make sure that they have proper identification should they become lost. Two easy ways that we can do this is the microchipping. We offer that at the shelter. There's still time to kind of get in there and get it done. You simply just stop in the shelter any day of the week between noon and 6:00 P.M. No appointment is necessary, and it just takes a few minutes. It's only 25 bucks. Very simple. The other thing is purchasing an Ohio dog license, which is required by law. It helps to identify your pet and you as their legal owner. And this also helps fund the shelter, county shelter operations as well. You know, that's $19.75, so fairly simple for us and helps keep you track. But thank you for your time, and I'd like to turn that back over to Carolyn Evans.
Thanks, Troy. Yeah, in addition to the work that's being done by our officers, by our wardens out in the field, I just want to say that I'm so proud of the work that's being done by our staff in the shelter. Our intake, our animal intake since August 2020 of last year has been about 5,500 animals. That equates to about 130 animals a week or close to 20 animals a day. Even with those big numbers, since we've opened, I'm really proud to say that we've been able to maintain a live release rate of 98% for dogs and 92% for cats. And what that means is 98% of the dogs and 92% of the cats that are leaving our facility are doing so either through adoption or being returned to their owners or being transferred to one of our rescue partners. We've had very, very few euthanasias at the facility since we've been here. And of those euthanasias that we've had to perform, the majority of them were medically related. They were euthanasias to end animal suffering, which is the true definition of euthanasia. We have had a handful of behavior euthanasias, and those are cases where it was simply unsafe, where an animal posed a public safety threat. It's really important to me to share with the community and to share with you that we have not and nor will we ever euthanize an animal for space at the Hamilton County Animal Shelter. That's something that we simply will not do. And I know that's something that's important to people in our community because we get asked that question every single day. We're asked, are you a no-kill shelter? And the answer is yes, we absolutely are a no-kill facility because of the practices that we follow and because of the life-saving results. Our approach to animal sheltering, to animal services, ensures that every animal and every single person who comes through our doors is treated as an individual. And just as Chief Taylor talked about their approach in the field, his work in the field with his officers, every situation is considered individually. We don't have a one-size-fits-all approach. And we're committed to providing the very best care for animals while they are with us, and then also to giving every single animal a chance at a live outcome. And I want to just touch base real quick back on those live release numbers because it's really easy to get wrapped up in those stats and feel like they're just numbers. But for us, they're more than just numbers. When we talk about a 98% live release rate, those are actual lives saves, and it's every single animal is an individual. We count animals noses in, noses out. Every single animal counts. And so the numbers are needed because the live release rate is a way for us to measure and to track our progress against the commitment that we made to you a year ago for animal life-saving. These are, these numbers are a way for us to communicate exactly what those results are, and they're an important way for the county commissioners and for the public to evaluate just how we're doing against our promise of animal life-saving and to hold us accountable. So we talk about those numbers a lot. Those numbers are really important to us, and transparency is really important to us as well. These are numbers that we regularly and openly post. We post them every month. They're on our website in much more detail than just a 98% number. It talks about the number of animals that came in and how they came in and how they're leaving our facility, and if they're dogs or cats or kittens and puppies. So there's a lot of detail there. We post them on our website as well. And I would encourage everybody who has an interest in what's happening with animal services in this, in this community to follow us on Facebook. Our Facebook page is Cincinnati Animal Care because we are posting regularly, every single day, things that are happening at the shelter in ways that you can help. We post adoptable animals. We post lost animals. Many times, we're able to find, help an animal find its way home because we've got people in the community sharing those within their, within their networks of friends and family, and we can find, find, find the animals owners. We post, we celebrate, we have adoptions, and we have medical cases and animals that we're able to save because of the life-saving commitment we have. We're sharing those feel-good stories as well. And then, very importantly, we post when we need help. We are not too proud to ask for help, and maintaining this kind of life-saving is not an easy task. 5,500 animals, 20 animals a day, they keep coming. We're hustling every single day, but we know that we simply could not achieve these results without the partnership and without the support of so many people. It really takes an entire community coming together to protect animals and to be a true life-saving community. And I want to say that it starts with elected officials that value animal, animal lives and make animal life-saving a priority. And we have that with our Hamilton County Commissioners. So I want to thank you for that and for your strong support of our mission and everything that we're doing at the animal shelter. That was really important to us when we were deciding whether or not we wanted to bid on this contract, if we felt that this was a community that would really embrace animal life-saving. So thank you for that from the bottom of our hearts. In addition to sort of starting at the top with that very most important partnership, we know that life-saving can't happen just within the four walls of our 30,000-square-foot facility here in Northside. Hamilton County is a community of more than 800,000 residents, and there's a role for everybody in the community to play if animal life-saving is important to them. So in addition to our staff here at the shelter, we have vet partners who provide medical care for our animals when we can't do it in-house, and they do that at shelter-friendly pricing. We have rescue partners, which are animal welfare organizations that specialize in working with particular types of animals, and they pull animals from the shelter, especially at times like this when we desperately need it. We have partners from all across the country that help us when we put out a call and help find homes for animals from Hamilton County. And then we have a strong team, a committed core of volunteers that are here at the shelter every single day, working alongside our staff and providing animal care within the facility. We also have people, we have a strong, growing, rapidly growing network of foster families that open up their homes in the community to animals. And this is. And this is, it's important. It provides a soft place for animals to land while they're looking for a home. It creates a critical cushion of space here at the shelter and allows us to greatly expand our capacity for care for animals that are in need. So fostering and volunteering are super important ways that people in the community can help us, and they're critically important to our success. And we've got a couple of animal friends with us right now. I think, Troy, do you have a dog? You're on mute. You don't have a dog?
You're on mute.
I have no dog. No, nobody brought me a dog.
Nobody brought you a dog.
Wait, okay, hang on. Go get a dog. All right, hang on. Madam President, if we were a person, I'm just saying, we'd see the dogs. This is a little kitten.
Very nice.
This is time. The three, two or three-month-old kitten, she's, she's quite small. We're not, we're not exactly sure. She came into us in a very bad state, brought in by Good Samaritan. She was neurologic. She was having seizures, and she's blind. She was treated in-house with our medical team with fluids and medications to stop potential bleeding to her brain. She received a blood transfusion right here in the facility. And after a week of treatment, we didn't know if she was going to make it, but here she is, making noise, asking for an adopter, on the road to recovery. And we expect to be available for adoption within a few weeks. So this is an example of the types of animals and the types of work that our medical team is doing here at the shelter.
Awesome. Sounds like she's saying Denise, Denise. Okay, well, why don't I?
You'll know when she's available.
Yes.
One of the things is when you're looking at animals like this, I want, I want, I want you and I want the community to know that we are operating at what we call code red right now. We are in desperate need of adopters, fosters, and rescue partners because we're right at the heart of kitten season right now, and we're also at overcapacity for dogs. Overcapacity for us, we have 100 suitable kennels, indoor/outdoor kennels for dogs at the shelter right now. So we call code red when we're at 90, when we only have 10 left. Remember, it can feel like 10 might feel comfortable, but we, we can bring in 20 animals a day. We can leave at 6 o'clock at night and come back in the morning and have one of Troy's officers bring in, you know, six animals overnight.
And we, you know, we were always aware that expansion was a necessity also. The county looked at that, and we'll be looking more at that also. So I would, thank you for your presentation, Carolyn and Troy. I will open it up for our commissioners because I have a couple comments, but I will let them. Vice President Reese, did you have any comments or questions?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. I just want to thank you, Carolyn and Chief, for the presentation. Considering I'm new to the commission and certainly wanted to know how we're doing this. One thing I think is great is what you talked about, is more of a holistic approach than a piecemeal approach. I do have a question. What is the process? So is it, are we connected with our 911? If someone sees, do they call? I was out at our 911 center. Do they call into there and then they dispatch to you, or do people have to call directly to you, or do we do both?
So it's both. People can call directly to the shelter. We have our own dispatchers here that have constant communication with our officers. We have communication, computers in all the vehicles, so it directly goes right to them which calls and which ones are emergency calls. Also, we're connected with the Hamilton County Communications, so we have law enforcement radios that are connected to us. If any officer within the city limits or Hamilton County needs to get ahold of us, they can immediately. So we, so we do, we do both.
Okay, that's good. And so we dispatch. Now, we, I know we talked about dogs and cats. Is it limited to that? Or, for example, I don't know if it ever materialized into anything, but there was a situation, I guess, that we, I read about, or saw on the news, where someone thought they had sighted a monkey on the West Side. Remember that? So from a process standpoint, they call 911. Is it just the police that would go, or would they call in experts? Or how does that, how would that work? How does that work?
It, it depends on the department that gets, gets the initial contact. Police departments by all means have every right to handle that call. They can contact us, they can contact the zoo, they can contact anybody that they need or they feel that need to be within that, that call. We were made aware of that call. We did help to look, and, you know, we didn't, there was nothing that ever turned out on that call, so.
Got you, okay. Yeah, I was just trying to see if it was kind of like, everybody's communicating on one system and.
Yeah, we, we all, we all try to work together. You know, we all have, each of us have our own specific duty that we do. And, you know, with us, we handle things on a state level, but we definitely can handle, you know, the safety and the concerns of our citizens in the community.
Got you. And then also, you mentioned this, Chief and Carolyn, that I liked, you gave also on your website, you said there's tips for, for owners in this, you know, you said, like you said, coming up with the Fourth of July and those, those fireworks. They even started on Juneteenth, Madam President. I said, wait a minute, there were no fireworks back in Juneteenth, but they, anything to get these fireworks going, and you had some tips for that. Do you have tips also on there for like, like today is so hot outside? Are those the things that you also put on your website? I thought that was pretty good from what you were saying.
Yeah, those are the things that we tend to put on our, on our Facebook page. It's a much more, the website's a little bit more static, and the website can be responsive to things like extreme heat. We post things about wildlife, you know, not moving, not moving wildlife and knowing when to call somebody for help and when that's just a normal situation where like, for instance, a deer will leave its, its fawn for the day while, while, while it leaves. So those are the types of things that we have on our, on our Facebook page.
Yeah, good. I like that proactive approach as well, so thank you, thank you, Madam.
Thank you. Commissioner Dreehouse.
Thank you, Madam President. I just have one quick question. Last time I was down at the shelter, there were, the majority of dogs that you all had, and it was actually previous to your service, were pit bulls, and it complicated the, the movement of the animals out into either foster or adoptive situations. And so I'm wondering if that is still the case? If you could just give us an idea, like by way of percentage, how many of the dogs that you have in shelter right now are pit bulls?
Well, I, I will say we have a lot of pit bull-looking dogs. That doesn't necessarily mean that there are pit bulls. There are a lot of breeds that look like pit bulls. People can even see a boxer and think it's a pit bull. Any sort of short-haired, blocky-headed dog is, is many times inaccurately grouped into that category of a pit bull, which is why it seems like there are so many of them. But absolutely, in our, in our, in our community, and, and there are, there are a high number of animals that fit that description.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a couple comments. I can remember about a year and a half ago when I met with Carolyn and Troy, and the meeting was just awesome. I think we did it over Zoom or WebEx, and, and I remember telling Carolyn, you have to bring Troy with you, no matter what you do. And so there's just so many great things I can say about your report. When I first came here as Commissioner, believe it or not, I mean, love dogs, but that wasn't the reason. I was very top on my priority list because I looked at accountability and how monies were being spent, and I don't go back, I go forward. But as I looked at all the money we were spending monthly for the SPCA that had been in existence for 50 years, receiving all this money, the transparency was not there. And I mentioned that to Carolyn, the documentation, the impact, what had been going on, I just could not see it. So the commission got together and evaluated all that. It was a hard change because, as I said, SPCA had been doing it for 50 years. But when I look at the numbers, I look at the numbers of officers, 11 officers, available, that was another thing, availability, being available, 365 days a year, 24 hours a day. And I'm not going to repeat all the things you said, but the response that you've had in the community, the outcomes, I thought it was a big deal when I heard that you guys had put beds in there for the, for the animals. I thought, man, I never thought of that. That was, I was excited because they'd been on concrete, and that had never happened as far as I know. So we are aware, as I said earlier, that we may need to expand or even move from that area, but you, for your intake, 20 animals a day. So it's just really full circle to see, for me anyway, that I knew we could do better. I knew we could do better, and you guys are doing so much better, in my opinion. And so when I look at that it's a no-kill facility, the release rate, everything that, that the community wanted, everything that the residents had complained about, I'm not saying you're perfect, of course, we all can grow, but all the things that they had spoken out about what they wanted, you guys are doing. You mentioned about the dog licenses. Is that facility the only place we can get the dog license? Because I know a lot of them closed down. Is that the only place they can be obtained?
I believe the only other place currently off-season, so the selling season is December and January for the year. I believe just the county, the auditor's office is where you can purchase them.
Okay, that's the only place, yeah.
And again, that, you know, I can't emphasize that enough, that that is such an important source of funding for the county and for the county shelter, because those dog and kennel funds are what goes into, to funding the contracts so that we can do the good work that we're doing. And thank you for your vote of confidence. I certainly appreciate that. You know, there was, there was good work being done before we got here. There's being done now, and there's, it definitely is not, you know, it takes, it takes money to save lives. So there's definitely, there's, there's a need for, for the funding to be able to do the work that we do. And we appreciate the support from, from the county and from the commissioners for really making this a priority and really recognizing that this is something that's important for the residents of Hamilton County.
Absolutely. And thank you for your transparency and the outcomes that we can see and that we can read on the paper. So thank you so much.
Come visit us anytime.
Oh, yeah. No, I can't come. If I come, I'm not leaving empty-handed, so I, I just, no, I'll just.
We'll start out with just a little weekend visit, a little weekend foster with.
Okay.
Madam President?
Yes.
Madam President, if I could, just, just from an administration perspective, I do just want to thank Carolyn and Chief Taylor for all that they've done. As the board knows, John, Assistant Administrator John Bergen is heavily involved with the oversight and administration of this contract. He's actually an ex-officio member on, on the board as well. So we have a lot of conversation on a regular basis with Carolyn and her staff. We do a, a regular update call with them to, to understand the challenges, and John's even in more frequent touch with them about the challenges and from an operational perspective. And I just wanted to say that I can assure the board that, that the transparency and the accountability. Vice President Reese spoke about a holistic approach. All those things that we've talked about today on, in this meeting are things that we're hearing and seeing from, from this organization on a, on a daily basis. So I really do appreciate that. As Carolyn indicated, there, there are needs. I think the board is aware of that. We have some facility needs out there that we're going to be doing some things in the interim to address, but ultimately, probably even later on this year, we'll start full into some planning and assessment studies for what we ultimately know will be a needed new facility there as well. So I just wanted to keep that on the horizon, but thank Carolyn for all of her work and the work of her staff. They're doing a great job.
Thank you, Jeff, so much. I would be remiss if I didn't bring up John because he worked like a dog. And so we, he really worked hard in transitioning to this new thing. So thank you so much, John. I see you're on there, so I didn't want to forget you. Thank you both, and we appreciate all that you're doing.
Thank you.
You too. Take care.
Uh-huh. Okay, we will move on to item number three, T L R C, to present Children's Services Levy Report and Recommendations to the Board. Lisa and I believe Gwen McFarland also will be talking.
We have Gwen McFarland as well as John Silverman. Gwen is obviously the Chair of the Tax Levy Review Committee, and John Silverman headed up, headed up the review of the Children's Services Subcommittee and their levy review specifically. So with that said, I think as long as Gwen is connected, we'll go ahead and turn it over to her and John for the reports, and I'll wrap up any follow-up and next steps after they're completed.
Thank you.
Gwen, you're on mute.
You're muted. Go in.
Okay, here I am.
Yes.
Okay, I just want to, again, thank everyone this morning, our, our outstanding leadership from the, our County Commissioner Stephanie Dumas and Alicia Reese and.
Gwen, you're breaking up, I think, but I think what she's getting at is thanking the commissioners. Yeah, I think, John, are you available too? Maybe you can sort of pick it up from there.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
So I think the first thing Gwen was saying was thanks to the commissioners. So thank you. We have a great process that is unique to Hamilton County, and I've been honored to be part of that process for about a dozen years. And I think the T L R C has done some great work under the guidance of, of Jeff Ludo and Lisa Webb, who is absolutely, both to a stellar job, and Lisa is fantastic for us. So a couple of quick thank yous. Gwen has been our leader for a long time, and all of the nine members of the T L R C were involved in this review because it's a pretty complicated review of these levies, but especially our subcommittee that was Dr. Jenny O'Donnell and Bishop Ennis Tate. I've, I've been involved in a number of levy reviews. Our subcommittee met every Monday morning at 11 o'clock for the past several months to go through the consultant report and to get to the point, to the place that we are today. This was a significant review, so thanks to all the members of the T L R C who participated, but especially to our subcommittee. I also want to quickly give a shout out to Tim McCartney, the Director of J F S, who will be leaving us soon, in the next few weeks. And Margie Weaver and Amy Story and Ella McCartney, who also helped in this review. They were excellent. They were transparent. They were very quick to respond to questions and needs, so we very much appreciate them. So getting to the, to the meat of it, the levy is a little different for, for us as a county for several reasons. First, because it's two, actually two levies. The original Children's Services Levy goes back many, many cycles. It existed without increases for a very long time. When it was approved by the voters in 2016, shortly thereafter, the T L R C started to have some significant concerns about basically the financial situation at J F S. Demand was increasing significantly. Funding was going down. We had staffing issues where we were not staffed in accordance with best practices. So in, in 2017, the T L R C started reviewing J F S again. And in 2018, the commissioner, commissioners approved placement of a second J F S tax levy on the ballot that doubled the size of the levy from $39 million to $78 million. And I would be remiss, I see, I see Bishop Hilton's name on the, on the list. Bishop Bolton was part of the T L R C back then and served with me on the, on that Children's Services Committee. So it, it was a very significant and important step for our, for our county to move forward with that. So first of all, it's a different levy because it's two levies. Secondly, it's a different levy because it's our largest levy in the county. It's also different because J F S is part of the, part of the county admin. It's also different because J F S, uh, is part of the, part of the county administration. It's our largest department in the county with more than 800 employees. So whereas a lot of our levies deal with outside agencies, this is funding mandated services that are required that we do as a county from the federal government and the state government. And it's provided through J F S, one of the, as I said, the largest department in Hamilton County. So it's a, it's a bit of a different, um, different kind of a levy, uh, situation for us and has taken a lot of review, as I mentioned. In, in 2018, when the voters approved the increase in the levy, the second levy, um, it, it did a lot of things, not just, um, solidifying the financial situation with J F S, but it also asked J F S to, uh, engage in some new things that J F S had not been doing. Um, and they've done a very nice job with some of those things. Family rights advocacy, uh, was a very big issue, uh, for us that they embraced. Um, we were looking for a J F S dashboard that could give everyone kind of a quick view. All of us probably get the dashboard. It talks about, um, the drug situation in Hamilton County and overdoses on a daily basis. We were looking for a similar kind of dashboard from J F S. Uh, we asked them to focus on some internal communication, on enhancement of kinship care and on some work initiatives. Um, they have done all those things. Um, so, um, I'd say that, that the T L R C, um, has been very, uh, pleased and proud of our J F S, um, in the job that they've done. Uh, we started looking at this review in January and, uh, we were looking at some, understanding the existing conditions before we started to tackle what a recommendation would be for the commissioners today. So a couple of the highlights of that, and some of you have heard me talk about this before. Um, Ohio is very unique across the country. Ohio is a home state rule wherein all 88 counties are responsible for providing their own children's services and funding them. So the state of Ohio, even though the state doubled its contribution to children's services about two years ago, we're still the lowest in the country. Our state is the lowest in the country at supporting children's services. They rely on us at the county level to do that. Uh, it, it is an illustration nationwide, state governments pay 42% of the cost of children's services. In the state of Ohio, it state pays 10% of the cost. So we as county residents bear the, um, the expense of funding these mandated services, um, in watching out for our kids. That's the first kind of finding that I think is, is really important. The second thing that has happened since, uh, we, um, increased the levy in 2018 was the federal government enacted an act called the Family First Act, the Family First Prevention Act, that had some really, um, good goals of improving in placement care for kids, of encouraging children, encouraging kinship care and also working on care for older kids in service. Um, the problem with family first, not just in Ohio, but across the country, is that it raised the, the level of, um, of accreditation that residential care providers had to have. And it established that after 14 days of care, in order to provide, in order to receive federal funding, the provider had to be what they call a qualified residential treatment provider. It's a great idea. It's a great concept. It was a very good lofty goal. The issue with it is in Hamilton County, not unlike other areas, we have 26 providers of residential care for children's services. We only have two that qualify as Q R T Ps. We don't have a good feel, nor do other counties, for how many of our providers are going to go on to the expense and the time it will take to, to get the accreditation as a Q R T P. And we don't know, exactly know what's going to happen to the cost of service because it's expensive for them to become Q R T Ps. So our consultant has budgeted $5 million additional expense to J F S. So that's, that's kind of an unusual occurrence that has happened that we have had to be cognizant of. COVID was another, uh, significant issue, obviously, for everything throughout the county and the country. Uh, for children's services, what it did is it actually lowered the number of reports into children's services, primarily because kids weren't in school. Kids weren't in community, uh, and, and, and community, uh, recreation settings, churches, places where a lot of times recommendations come into J F S. We didn't have that this year. So our numbers, the numbers actually of census at J F S actually went down. And some of the things that we were looking to J F S to incorporate in 2018, they just weren't able to do because of, because of COVID. So that was, that was, um, a, a big issue for us. Uh, the J F S financial condition today is much different than it was in 2016. Because our, the census numbers were down, because management was significantly enhanced and did a great job, and because, um, we doubled the size of the levy, J F S now has a fund balance that is much more significant than it was when we looked at this in 2016. The trajectory of the fund balance in 2016 was very negative. It made everyone very nervous. Now we have an opposite situation. We have significant funds and frankly, uh, the T L R C would like to see us do something with those funds that really, really moves the needle. So, um, I'm rambling on a bit, but I'm gonna keep going for just a few more minutes if you don't mind. Pardon me. J F S today finds itself in a bit of a unique situation because of the funds that J F S has and because Tim is leaving, we're going to be bringing in a new Director of J F S. It's a unique time, uh, for J F S. And the T L R C really believes that this is the cycle that we should initiate some aspirational goals for J F S and, and some expectations that they achieve those goals. So, um, we have, uh, five specific recommendations that we would like J F S to pursue during this next cycle. First, we would like them to continue their efforts to increase and retain staff. Funding from the 2018 levy cycle moved us in the right direction, but we still have a ways to go. So we would like them to, uh, provide an actionable plan to improve their staffing, including hiring staff and retaining staff. Number two, we would like them to continue their efforts towards staff diversity at all levels of the organization. So J F S employs 50% of their staff are people of color. We would like them to continue that endeavor, but as I said, we'd like to see diversity at every level throughout the organization. Number three, uh, I mentioned youth services a minute ago, which is a, which is a key component of family first. Hamilton County's numbers for youth services are, for, for older youth in service are higher than the rest of the country. We have more older kids in service and we have more kids that age out than other, than the average across the country. We would like J F S to work on that, to spend some time and focus to try to change that, change that arc. Uh, number four, um, studies in common sense have shown us that there's a cor- correlation between homelessness or the threat of homelessness or the lack of unstable housing and children's services. Um, J F S has an organization within its midst called the J F S Planning Committee. We would like J F S to spend some time with the Planning Commission, Planning Committee and ask them to focus some efforts on the threat of homelessness, on unstable housing, and see if they can be of benefit to that. It's a, a, a couple of these recommendations are a little unusual because they're more preventative services than treatment services. We believe that J F S is in a position today to be able to take on some prevention method, measures like homelessness, like unstable housing, and really, um, help in that endeavor for our county. Uh, number five, um, we would like to see T L R, we would like to see the J F S, pardon me, put together an actionable plan to enhance their communication, collaboration and partnership with community members and stakeholders. As part of our review, Bishop Tate organized a community meeting for us where we had, um, 12 to 15 different members of the community that served in every kind of role. People who had worked for J F S, people who have been clients of J F S, kids who had gone through J F S services. We had a very productive conversation about communication, about getting out into the community and letting the community know what J F S has to offer for children's services. So we would like to see J F S put forth an actionable plan to really, um, to really, improve that, that situation. So those are, there, there are several other various, uh, recommendations in the consultant report, but I won't, I won't drone on about those. Um, the items that we outlined as improvements will add $56.5 million of cost to the J F S budget. We believe that at the end of this cycle, if we fund J F S at its current levy, combination of both levies, so $78 million, which would not be an increase in taxpayer burden, it continues the same amount as today. We believe that we can ask J F S to en- enact these recommendations and still have a significant, stable, recommended balance at the end of the levy term. So our recommendation to the commissioners today, our respectful recommendation is for you to place on the ballot in November 2021, this November, a, a measure that would allow the supplemental levy, the 2018 levy, would lapse and not be renewed, but the original levy that was approved in 2016 would be increased to the same levy, same level as the combined levy amount, $78 million. As I said, it allows J F S to enact some things that the T L R C feels would be game changers. It would take the improvements that have been made at J F S and, and really do great things for the community. It would not increase, uh, taxpayer burden. Um, and, um, and, and we would also like to see a robust midterm review, uh, two years from the time the levy is enacted, so about January of 2024, um, so that we can, uh, see how J F S is doing with this. But again, many thanks to the commissioners for embracing this process. Many thanks to Gwen and Lisa, the T L R C, uh, Jenny and Ennis. Um, can't thank you all enough for the time and for allowing us to present today. Happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you so much, John. Um, just a great thorough, um, presentation. Those five recommendations, um, that as you said, were preventative, uh, recommendations. I, I feel were, uh, on target. And if we're able to, um, buy into those, work on those five areas, uh, ultimately, our biggest goal is to reduce the numbers that are on the caseloads. Um, and so I think, uh, just really outstanding the work of the group and what you guys have done and presented to us. And also in addition, not, uh, indicating that there should be any increase, but to maintain, uh, the level that we had before. Um, just had one question. Um, we were saying our fund balance is a little, uh, it's better this time. I was ju- just wondering what the fund balance is right now.
Um, we expect the fund balance at the end of this levy cycle to be, uh, just above $100 million.
Okay, okay. Thank you so much.
Yes ma'am.
Presentation just, just awesome, just great work. And you indicated how often you guys have, have met and really worked. Thank you Gwen, also for the leadership. I will open it up to our, uh, my colleagues, uh, Vice President Reese. Have you had any questions or comments?
Uh, thank you, uh, Madam President. Um, I too want to, uh, thank and commend the entire committee, uh, for this work. Uh, and, uh, these recommendations, uh, and got a chance to, to read a lot of them. And certainly, um, I think the timing of us going into, uh, whereas we're gonna be looking for who's gonna be the next, uh, head of, uh, J F S, I think certainly is helpful. I just want to make sure, I wanna, um, make sure in terms of our, um, messaging of the recommendations today, I just wanna go back over it one more time, John, just so I have a, a good, um, understanding. And again, I wanna thank some of the faces I see on here, too. Bishop Tate on here, I see him and of course Gwen McFarland, thank you. And Dr. Jenny O'Donnell, uh, thank you and Lisa for your leadership as well. Um, so the one levy will go away.
Yes ma'am.
But the message on the, um, the message, I guess, that we would have is that we're going for an increase on this levy, right?
No. Both levies expire in December of this year. So the idea would be to combine the total amounts between the two levies into the renewal levy, um, but not increase the burden on taxpayers above what they're currently at.
Okay, how is that communicated? Um, I'm more on, uh, cause I understand inside here, we understand one levy will go away, but whatever we had in that levy, we're gonna purge it.
Right.
So on the ballot.
On the ballot.
There would be an increase or a decrease or.
There would be a renewal levy with an increase, um, that needs to be renewed with an increase. What that will look like.
Yeah.
It's not, pardon me, it's not an easy, or you need to do a good job of.
So it's very difficult. I mean, we can, we can, uh, the folks that's coming to the polls, we gotta figure out what confused. So that.
Sixteen years of working that we ever experienced, trying to figure out how to, how to brand and use that.
Yeah, I'm with you a hundred percent. Um, fortunately, it has been incredibly supportive of children's services to ever have. And we had very good support in 2018. So hopefully, based on the, um, on the support and the good marketing, um, that will accompany this, um, discussion, we'll, we'll get to the finish line.
Got you. Hey Tim, were those re, were those, uh, was the message it won't raise your taxes? Or was it?
So the 2016 levy was a, was a renewal levy. It was a flat, the, that, that levy has actually not been increased. It's 2.77 mils, I believe, since 96. Um, that levy's been the same every year. It's strictly been a renewal. 2018 was when we needed to do a supplemental levy, um, because J F S was just facing exponential increases and the number of kids coming into care and the level of care and services that those kids required. That levy obviously was not a renewal. It was, it, it was well explained that this was a supplemental, um, with the intention of that three years. And then we would reassess and potentially combine going forward, which is where we're at now.
So it was a totally new levy that was still like great support.
It was a new levy with the same language, but an increase of 1.98 mils, I believe on that.
Got you. And on the, I don't know, this was part of their scope, probably wasn't, but just, you know, with COVID, COVID kind of changed the game. And even though the mask is off, uh, people pockets is still hurting right now. I mean, it's, I mean, I think we underestimate people who are really hurting. And I'm not talking about people that were, you know, what we consider destitute. I'm talking about that middle group that gets no help for anything and is the ones that pay for all the taxes. They never get a break. So I was just wondering, was that taken into consideration? Or did we just look strictly from a programmatic standpoint?
Well, uh, we, we looked at it more from a programmatic standpoint, um, with our review. Uh, I think that the community communications piece of this and the engagement piece, um, can provide some help. You know, outside of children's services, J F S does a lot of other things, um, on the economic side, that when we have J F S children's services people in the community, I think it will, we believe it will help other areas of need that outside of children's services, but within the purview of J F S.
Got you. Okay. Well, thank you. That's, um, all the questions I have for this second. I might think.
Thank you ma'am.
Here for my colleagues. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, uh, Vice President Reese, because the messaging, as you were saying, is so important. But I think if they're able, I know if they're able to hear not an increase, uh, that it's a renewal and you will not have to pay any more than you were paying, uh, before. And I know you guys have talked about how to make that happen, but it is extremely, extremely important to make sure that that's communicated. Commissioner Drehouse.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, so at the top of my list is the fact that there is no increase here. Um, unfortunately, the ballot language is going to read that there is an increase, um, because we're combining two levies. So I, I agree that that is probably our number one challenge, um, related to this. That said, uh, I want to thank the committee for doing all this work. Um, you've all been mentioned individually, uh, and I want to do that too. So John and Ennis and Jenny and Gwen, um, thank you so much for, cause I know that this is a labor of love for you guys and, um, Lisa and Jeff. this is a labor of love for you guys and, um, Lisa and Jeff as well. But this is a, a challenging task because you, you know, we've got a, a significant balance here because we ran an entirely new levy in two thousand and eighteen, because we weren't hitting the mark in two thousand and sixteen. And so the voters passed that, we were very grateful for that. We had some pretty dire circumstances over at JFS. And now we find ourselves in a, a good situation where we've got a, a balance. So I've got, I've got a couple of questions just related to that balance. So we implemented some very strategic, um, strategies related to keeping kids safely at home when we could. And then before they get to that foster care system, implementing that stipend for kinship care to incentivize kin to, uh, take those kids before we got to the foster care piece, which is, um, you know, it's, it's disruptive in a way that the other two are not, and, um, it's also more expensive. And so what we were seeing was, uh, not a decrease in calls for service and, you know, the two, four, one kids. We were still having a substantial number of calls, but the number of kids going to foster care declined because of these strategies that were put into place. I know COVID, uh, messed all of our stats up. I mean, I, I understand, but do we still see that same trend or, or do we know intuitively that that is still happening?
And there's, I will say to start, um, that this levy review, and I know John talked about our Monday meetings, but it has been the most collaborative review we've done to date. And those Monday meetings were not just the subcommittee meeting, it was the subcommittee with the consultant and with JFS all together, working on this report. And I see Tim pop in right away because this was fully collaborative. But yeah, I think what we see is prevention works and it's making a difference. Tim, do you have comments on that?
Yeah, um, and, and Margie may want to chime in as well. Um, Commissioner Drehouse, yes, uh, that trend is continuing. Um, the percentages of, of, of kinship families is growing. And we've also just, um, uh, put a particular person, uh, we call it a director position, specifically in charge of our kinship, um, oversight and engagement. So we hope that that will continue to have, um, a positive impact on that. As you said, uh, twenty twenty just kind of knocked everything, you know, for, for a loop, uh, but we have quickly rebounded to that, uh, to the recommendations that John talked about. We have provided a robust, um, response the day after and have shared some documents with Lisa and Jeff that'll eventually, um, be shared with, um, with all of you of, of ways that we believe we can, um, meet and exceed the, the recommendations that, that they have made.
Great. So I, I'm glad to hear that the trend continues because that was, you know, the whole point of it was to try to keep, keep kids safely at home if we could or with family members, if not that. So a couple of questions then, so that, so then in that context, it allows us to think differently about JFS and about the levy and about the services that we can provide. And you all have obviously given that a great deal of thought. Um, and I thank you for being, for that outside the box thinking. Uh, and so children's homelessness, um, has something that we have, uh, thought a lot about, especially during COVID. And so I am gratified to know that that is part of your thinking too, that this levy now has the potential to do things that we did not have the potential to do in the past, uh, because it's, we're really outside now of paying a decent wage for caseworkers, reducing those caseloads, and we've got more going on here. And so, um, I, I am thankful for that idea, uh, and for that being included here as a recommendation. The other one, uh, related to community, uh, engagement and communications, I, I think we have learned that people generally don't know what we're doing. So, um, sometimes it's good to be the sleeper and sometimes it's not. And so, uh, I, I don't know, um, if, if Enis had a lot to do with this one, but, uh, you know, I, I, I agree that we need to better communicate with our constituents and those that, um, support these services through tax dollars, but also may need the services. So related to, um, the third recommendation, um, where we've got higher numbers of youth aging out of the system, and we see that as a negative trend and need to do better. I'm not sure I understand, um, if, if we were to try to reduce this trend, what does, what's that action step? What, what are we trying to accomplish?
We're not really sure. I, I think that we, we kicked around with the consultant, a lot of ideas about mentorship, um, and financial mentorship. We're not sure how to move the needle. But our number, for some reason, and I don't, I don't think that we really put our finger on what the reason was, that our, our numbers are higher than the rest of the country. But it's something that we would like JFS to start looking into, um, to see if we can't change that trend. But Commissioner, I, we don't really know the answer. We just know that we would like it to be a focus. And we believe it is an issue that we, that should, that JFS should spend some time on.
Okay, yeah. It's interesting. It's, that's an interesting stat, I think, for us. Okay, all right, great, thank you.
Commissioner, Commissioner Drehouse, we also know a couple of things about, about these youth. We know that, um, nationally, looking at trends nationally, that, that these youth who are transitioning are not transitioning smoothly into adulthood. And so if we have a higher number of these kids, and they are kids, right, here, even they're older kids, but they're still kids. If we have a higher proportion here than in other places, we already know that that's an at-risk group for, for instance, criminal offenses very early in their adulthood. And so what we're trying to do, one of the, it was, this was part of my, my plea to everyone was not to criminalize these kids. So try to keep these kids in a social service situation rather than really frankly, a pipeline into the criminal justice system. So, um, you know, if I were, you know, as the psychologist, if I were writing the outcomes for these, these late teens and what, what are we looking for? I would be looking at positive transitions. So financial management skills, adaptive and, and autonomous living skills, able to manage living either in a, you know, a group home or, um, uh, an adult living situation safely and stably without, then all the other outside influences that come to kids who are, you know, seventeen to twenty-five and do not have the brain development yet to make really great choices. And the first bad choice that comes along can really send them in a really bad direction. So when you think about that, that's, that's what we were talking about.
Okay, and, and it ties into homelessness too.
Oh, absolutely.
Right, often without a home. So I guess the idea, and correct me if I'm wrong, is to do, um, some work also before they age out, in, in addition to what everybody's talking about, which is the aging out piece, but try to get them in a more stable situation before they age out, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right. Thank you for that clarity. Yeah, interesting statistics. So I, I, you know, again, I just want to thank you all. I, I sat in on a couple of your public hearings. And I, I am grateful that there's so much creativity and thoughtfulness going behind this because this is a real opportunity here, and I, I know you all know that, but I'm excited about it, um, that we can start to reprogram some of these dollars in a way that keep more and more kids out of the system and help the kids that are in the system do better, uh, and transition better as they come out. So that's all I've got for today. But I, again, you know, thanks for all the work that's gone into this recommendation.
Thank you for your time.
And absolutely. Commissioner Drehouse hit, hit on the one area, the solution number three about the youth, um, aging out and just wondering, do we need to start earlier with them as we look at independence and, and everything as, and as Dr. Jenny was saying, if you, you look at the penal system, if you look at the background of those coming in early, they've been in foster care, they've been involved with JFS. So, I mean, the statistics show, uh, where they've been. And so they're just lost when that age comes, like, what do I, no matter how much we try to help them and build them, that, um, so I'm just wondering, do we need to start earlier with that independence and, and that mentoring? But I wanted to get back to the seventy eight million that we had to allocate in two thousand and eighteen. As you guys mentioned, all, all these unfunded mandates, uh, we're looking, our balance is looking good now, but we still have lots of unfunded mandates that are still up, being discussed. I, I think, um, House Bill seventeen, I think it is, is, is one of the, but there are many of them. So we have to make sure that we can meet those requirements and have the money to do those things. So I certainly understand why we want to keep it at the, at the same level. So thank you guys so much. It looks like Gwen, uh, you may want to say something to kind of summarize everything, if you're working.
But the discussion is moving forward. Can you all hear me?
It's still going in and out a little, but we can hear you.
I just want to thank you all, and, and when we look at intervention, always look at, uh, interventionists, you know, looking at individuals with those skill levels to help move us, move that deal forward. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I would just, also just like to talk next steps. I mean, this really is the moment that the T L R C has spent six months working on getting this report together and handoff to the commissioners. And now on your end, uh, the real work begins to try to determine what to put on the ballot, um, and how to get that done timeline wise, based on the commissioner's summer schedule and the deadlines, um, at the state to get the ballot resolutions to the Board of Elections. The date for that will be July twenty ninth. Today's June twenty ninth, we're handing it off. Thirty days later, um, July twenty ninth will be the date for commission action on, on putting, on adopting the resolution for the ballot. In advance of that, we will be bringing forward resolutions to request that the auditor certify millage calculations. Um, I've already got a few calculations I'm working on right now that I'll share with the board as we try to narrow down and figure out what exact amounts we want them to certify in advance. Those resolutions do not commit the board to those amounts, um, but we do need a auditor certificate for any amount that we want to consider in advance of the meeting on the twenty ninth for the ballot resolution, because both of those will have to be approved and included in the packet for the Board of Elections. The other step that we need to do is schedule a public hearing from the commissioner's side. I've been in conversation with Commissioner Simon Dumas's office to try to find a date for that, looking towards, uh, July fifteenth, but we'll still look at schedules and see what date works for that best, um, before releasing that. But obviously with enough time that we can get the public, uh, aware of what's happening and if they want to come down here or do a virtual meeting, since we'll be hybrid at that point, to work out all the details and communicate that to them as soon as possible.
Thank you so much, Lisa, and for all your hard work. I believe Susan Schiller is from Bethany House is here, would like to.
I apologize, I've, I've got to run to a, a meeting for my day job.
Okay.
I apologize, but I'm going to hop off.
You've done well. Thank you, John.
Thank you all.
Susan, you had a few words to say?
Yes, I, yes, I do. Thank you so much. My name's Susan Schiller, I'm the CEO of Bethany House, and thanks for the opportunity to speak today. As many of you know, Bethany House is the largest of the four family shelters in Cincinnati. We shelter sixty percent of the homeless families, sixty-six percent of the homeless kids. We serve our children, our city's poorest families and most vulnerable children in the community. These are the kids living without a home, living in their cars, doubled up, living in parks and abandoned buildings. We need to do better. I'm here to ask for an investment in children and family homelessness and for the county commissioners to support the recommendation, uh, that John just shared earlier, number four of the Tax Levy Review Committee. First, I, I want to address the need. The number of families in need of emergency shelter and the severity of barriers to safe housing continues to rise in Cincinnati. Calls to our regional homeless help line, um, many of you know that is the hotline or, um, the central access point, increased twenty-two percent in twenty nineteen and another twenty-four percent in twenty twenty. It's no longer enough to provide food and a safe, clean place to sleep. Our moms, our dads, our kids need mental and physical healthcare, education services, parental counseling, employment services and connections to community services. The family shelters have an unbelievable opportunity to entertain while families are in crisis, and we can provide the wraparound holistic services they need. We address homelessness short-term through shelter and rehousing services. We get the families stable in housing, but our services also address long-term prevention through post-shelter support and aftercare services. Now, who do we shelter? Ninety-five percent of our families are led by a single mom. Ninety percent of our families are people of color. Seventy percent of our children, seventy percent of our census on any given day are children. Investing in families experiencing homelessness is essential to closing the equity gap and the opportunity gap that we all talk about so much in, in today's world. Bethany House and the family shelters can make a difference in keeping children out of foster care because we focus on housing stability and long-term self-sufficiency. We're putting the safety, learning and development of our city's poorest children at risk when we don't adequately fund emergency shelter and services, especially in the midst of increased need. Dr. O'Donnell just talked about the pipeline. I maintain on a regular basis that Bethany House is a pipeline, a lighthouse to shelter house and to city gospel mission. I maintain that my ten-year-old girl in the shelter today may be back in six to eight years with children of her own. We're, we're wasting time and the opportunity to change the direction of our children's lives. We need to make a commitment to the kids in, in poverty and to put homeless children at the top of that list. Many of you have been to Bethany House, those that haven't, um, I invite you out to, to learn about the impact we're making. I'm available for questions and to talk at any time. And, um, you know, I just really want the, the opportunity to thank everybody here today and the work of the Tax Levy Review Committee, and especially the work of the county commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And I see another hand up. If we can limit our comments to two minutes, that would be great. Let's see, Kevin, uh, Kevin Finn of the Strategies and Homeless, yes.
This is Kevin, can you hear me?
I hear you now.
All right, great, thank you. Again, I'm Kevin Finn, I'm the president of Strategies to End Homelessness. Thanks to the commissioners, I'm also a, um, member of the JFS Planning Committee and a huge fan of Tim McCartney. Anyway, I, I just wanted to put some numbers behind some of what Susan was just saying. You know, more than half of the families that are experiencing a housing crisis in Hamilton County do not get any services. And to tie some numbers to those, the services I'm referring to are, you know, shelter diversion, which is for families that are couch surfing and who we have an opportunity to restore to housing before they become literally homeless. And then, of course, we have shelters like Bethany House. So last year, we had four hundred and thirty-two families that went through shelter diversion programs, and we had another four hundred and ninety-two families that went through our shelters. And even with those numbers, which add up to well over nine hundred families in Hamilton County, more than half of the families that needed those services were turned away with nothing. So I, and, and we're not able to be offered a space in any of those programs. So I too would just like to echo support for the recommendations that, um, you know, we do more in that, in partnership between the homeless services system and JFS, because I think a lot of those families and a lot of those kids, when we're not able to help them with their housing crisis, they eventually end up, um, as kids and families that JFS is needing to serve. So I, I do think there's a lot of additional work that, good work that we could do there together. So thank you so much.
Thank you. And Kevin, when you say, um, half were turned away, um, because of the lack of structures or facilities to accommodate them, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, so the family is called the central access point, which Susan Schiller mentioned before, if we can, we'll put them in a diversion program before they need to come into shelter. If it's too late for that, we'll bring them into shelter. But where, there's not enough capacity in those programs and shelters, so less than half of them actually get in.
Thank you so much. I remember when that was established. Okay, thank you both for your comments. Tim, did you want to speak about, yes?
Yeah, Madam President, I appreciate it. Just real quickly, I, I want to assure first of all, um, everybody on the call, um, that we, we, we are and will provide a very robust response to address the, the concerns listed. But I really wanted to give, uh, Margie Weaver, at least about thirty seconds to really address, uh, the, uh, the concerns both, uh, Madam President, uh, you and Commissioner Drehouse brought up about. uh, the, uh, the concerns both, uh, Madam President, uh, you and Commissioner Drehouse brought up about services to older youth, because it is something, uh, we are putting a lot of resources to as well as the, uh, uh, the, the, the childhood homeless issue. And I'm so pleased I have a fan. So thanks, Kevin.
You have many fans, yeah.
He's talking about the fan above his head. Margie, go ahead.
Thank you. Hello, commissioners. Yes, I just wanted to, uh, give you a little bit of background. We believe at probably in 2017, uh, we, our census showed that we had younger children in care. So that birthed the three, birthed the six, and that seemed to be attributed to the heroin epidemic and the number, you know, the higher number of children that were coming into care. Um, but part of the impact of that was really that we saw more children enter permanent custody. So we saw a situation where children weren't reunited with families or kin at the same rate. So, uh, the impact really has been seeing children at the different, you know, at the other end of the census. So, um, we think that's what created, um, and again, when you look at the data, a higher number of older children in care. And we, we have already started, um, conducting an evaluation of, you know, how we can support and serve them better. We are a community that keeps children in care longer. Um, it's at the discretion of counties. Most counties emancipate children at 18. We keep children up through their 21st birthday so that we can give them as much support as we can. We also offer aftercare services for children. But again, we know we can do better. We did form a work group and we invited and surveyed youth to give us feedback and inform, um, what we could do better for those youth. Um, and so part of that was some, um, greater attention to, uh, life skill building, coaching, mentoring for those youth. Um, the other realization was there was inconsistent practices in terms of what youth were getting. So some, you know, much of it depended on their caregiver rather, you know, on, and their caregiver's knowledge of how to help them build those skills. So we, we intend to purchase, um, um, virtual curriculum and training that would go out to all of our providers that they could use with youth to provide a consistent platform um, for support and training, um, and obviously help the caregivers meet, you know, understand what every kid needs to know. But also, you know, we want kids to get individualized tailored care. So, um, we're hoping that the combination of, you know, education to the provider community who provide care to the children, the curriculum, the, uh, coaching, mentoring will wrap around support and services. We also, uh, worked with, um, and received a grant to work with a, a promising practice model in California. So that's, it's a pilot program right now with one of our vendors, St. Joseph Orphanage, that really wraps around support. So the child has, um, not only a social worker to, uh, help, you know, with social, emotional, behavioral health, wellbeing, uh, aspects. There's also so, an education coach and mentor, and then there is a vocational uh, person who supports that youth and a housing support person to help that youth, um, while they're in care and then as they transition from care. And finally, I will say, uh, where we really need to invest is, you know, all children deserve permanent homes. They don't deserve to be raised by the system. And so that's an area where we can improve. Uh, historically, older youth tend, um, to not be adopted at the same rate and not achieve, uh, permanent living arrangements with, um, adult supporters and caregivers. So we really are, um, evaluating that because that's really truly what every child needs. And the kids who really said they got what they needed, it was because they had a dedicated person in their lives, a supportive person in their lives who made sure, um, that they were a priority. And so, uh, we, uh, intend to work with the state on a program called, it's a, uh, youth centered permanency roundtables. Um, and it really is starting early, I thi- think, um, Commissioner Drehouse and Commissioner Dumas mentioned, you know, really starting earlier and it really does. It starts early on when, um, a child comes into care about thinking and involving, uh, the child in, uh, permanency planning. And finally, we also, you know, we know we can do better when children leave in aftercare. We tend to be a safety net. So if you're in crisis, call us after you leave care. But we really need to be, uh, we, we plan and intend to enhance, uh, you know, intentional supportive services, including funding housing for youth for a period of time once they leave care, knowing that that's when they're most vulnerable. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Margaret, for the, all that information and the clarity. Appreciate it. Um, I have a question for Tim. I want to pick your brain, not now, because we're not going to belabor it. But I'm still trying to wrap my head around why Ohio is so high with, um, youth aging out, uh, of the system. Do we have a higher number? You don't have to answer this now, but do we have a higher number of that age in the system? Uh, demographically, do we have more in Ohio, uh, of that age in other states? I mean, it's just really, I can't figure that out. So you can think about it, sleep on it and send me an email about it or something, because I'm trying to figure out why Ohio. Uh, but anyway, so, um, that'll give you some work to do, Tim. He said, okay. Thank you guys. Yeah.
Can I repeat one more time?
Yes, uh huh.
So I, I wanted just to say that, um, because of the way that the TLRC has approached this, um, we, I think are able to look at all the levies. Um, you know, there's a contextual piece to all of this because we have seven levies. We obviously don't want to, um, pro- you know, we've got needs in all the levies, right? I mean, we, we could use an increase in all the levies, but we can't do that because we have to be sensitive to the property taxpayers in the county. And so because we're thinking creatively through this levy, which can be held flat and still utilize some of that reserve for some of the needs that we've heard about related to other levies, such as indigenous care, which is where the homeless piece often comes in. Um, Strategies is funded in part through, um, the indigenous care levy. And so the, the other one that occurs to me is the mental health levy, where, uh, if we want to continue to try to create this balance, uh, and not, uh, provide increases, maybe, uh, as we get to the public hearing, uh, we will hear about the mental health needs of kids in our community and how some of those mental health needs, um, maybe could have been addressed in the mental health levy, but maybe should be addressed in the children's services levy, because this is where we've got the reserve and, and we can do it without raising taxes. And so I offer that by way of, um, kind of, like I said, the context. I know Children's Home and others are serving many, many thousands of kids, uh, with, uh, you know, different kinds of needs in our community. And I'm hopeful that that too can be included as part of the thinking related to, um, this levy and what we've heard related to the other levies.
Uh, that's a great comment to correlate all of it together, because there are needs everywhere. So, um-
And I will just say, and just as a piece, you, we've heard from two people from the public right now. If this had been open to the public, we would have had all kinds of providers and agencies coming in and speaking. The public hearing will definitely be able to give them that opportunity.
Absolutely. Okay, um-
Vice President, if, if, if I could just briefly?
Yeah, I see Vice President Reese-
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I'll defer to Vice President.
Oh, no, I, I just wanted to, I'm glad we're standing where we have a, a public hearing going on. And I do want to look at it holistically. Um, again, I do think, um, we've got to put some, once we, as we're going in, is put some time on the messaging as well. Like we said, because we, we're going to be voting on our, our dollars, American Rescue Dollars, uh, this week. And people are seeing on the news, you know, money. And we've got a lot of people who are in delinquency with their, um, property taxes right now and risk of losing their homes. So we really got to have a tight message and understanding of what we're moving forward with. And if we're looking at, um, programming components, I just want to put out, I put it in the, the RA. I don't think, I don't know if it'll make it there, but I'm really looking at institutionalizing some things uh, so that we could get a better measurement. Because a lot of times we do a lot of things and we fund a lot of things. And then we run into people and they say, well, what is the county doing? Um, and we're doing a whole lot. So, um, I'm going to put out there that I, I am advocating for, um, a youth, um, a youth office, youth development office that would be able to give us, you know, push them a button. Here's everything we're doing for youth, youth employment, youth, what are we doing for the youth? And I do, um, agree with another recommendation, there's a lot of recommendations, but one I do agree with as well. Um, Dr. Jenny O'Donnell talked about is the part about aging out, because we kind of have people in and we're like, okay, we're, we're, we're going to help have a roof over their head and have some food. But then when you get a certain age, okay, goodbye, good luck. Um, and then, like you said, they end up back needing some kind of assistance because they end up being homeless or they can't make it, uh, out here in the world. So, um, I, I am very interested in that model to keep the stabilization so that they can go on to become productive and, you know, be successful in their life, pay taxes and break the cycle. The cycle won't break if all we do is after a certain age, thank you and goodbye. So, um, I am interested in getting more information about that, Madam President. I know, uh, we'll have more, um, to come on this. But considering that the timelines and the summertime, um, I want to make sure that we are looking at it. At least for me, it'll help me see it holistically so that I can help also give the right messaging, uh, as we move forward with whatever our decision is. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, Jeff?
Yeah, uh, thank you, Madam President. And Vice President Reese actually, uh, just said, uh, a lot of what I was going to, going to say. Um, and, uh, but just to summarize, this is a, a, obviously a critically, uh, important levy. All the count, the levies that the counties have, county has are incredibly important. Um, there's obviously, as, uh, uh, Mr. Silverman said a little bit earlier, there's been, always been tremendous public support uh, for this particular levy, but it is, it is a complex levy. There's a lot of moving parts to it. Um, we, as Vice President Reese said, the issue of messaging, uh, and as was hit on earlier, uh, the need is tremendous and the need is evolving. Uh, and JFS is being very innovative and as you heard from, um, from Ms. Weaver earlier and, and Tim about how we are going about, uh, addressing that need. Uh, so there's a lot of really good stories here to tell. Um, Lisa informed you what the timeline was and as, as Vice President Reese just indicated, um, as is typical in the life of, of a commissioner, there's not a whole lot of time, uh, to, you know, we don't have months and months. We do have a month though. So, um, I do want to make sure that we're scheduling some time with each individual office to, uh, go into detail um, with Lisa, myself, uh, the JFS staff, so that you can ask the questions you need to ask to be fully informed on this. And in particular, to understand, as we, Lisa and I have been working with Tim and his staff, uh, to help understand in the light of this recommendation, what does implementation look like for this? Of all these programs, we're talking about how do, what does that look like, uh, on the ground and, uh, being implemented starting day one? So we want to make sure that we have, that we give the board a good understanding of that so that you can ask your questions and be ready for those public hearings and an ultimate vote in late July. So we'll reach out to each office and make sure that we're scheduling that time early. Uh, as Commissioner Reese said, we don't have a lot of time. We want to make sure we start on that, uh, quickly. So that's all I had. Commissioner, just wanted to wrap it up with a, a note that we would be back in touch to make sure that we are getting on board calendars to answer questions.
Thank you so much. And we definitely will meet this, the timelines that have been given to us. And we have to be well-informed to be a mouthpiece for the community as they approach us on this, uh, levy and other levies that are coming forth. So we will make sure we meet those deadlines. Yes, Lisa?
On note of educating the community, I'd just like to add that this report, the report from the TLRC as well as the full consultant report is on the TLRC's website on the county page. If anybody would like to go and view it themselves, highly recommend it.
Yeah, awesome. Thank you. Okay, thank you, everyone. Well, we will move forward. You guys can stay on if you'd like. Um, so our next item on the agenda is, uh, court management. No, I'm sorry, Jeff is going to go next. Implementation plan for ARP.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. Uh, so, um, it's my pleasure today to, uh, present to the board, um, a recommended implementation plan for the American, uh, Rescue Plan dollars, as the board is aware. And I'll share my screen here shortly. Um, uh, the county, uh, was the direct recipient of, of a $158 million allocation related to the American Rescue Plan and the state local government fiscal recovery fund, um, specifically out of that, uh, fund. Uh, those are being received in two tranches. We received the first tranche, uh, roughly two months ago. Uh, we've been using the past several weeks and month and couple of months here to plan for, uh, the most impactful way to go about allocating these dollars to address the needs of, 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 of the community as it relates to responding and recovering from COVID-19, as well as to plan ahead, uh, to be transformative uh, and make sure that as we move into the future, that we set the community up to be better prepared uh, to address, uh, this type of, uh, issue, uh, in the future. So I'm going to go ahead and try to share my screen here. It would help if I hit share.
Okay, there it is.
There we go. Okay. Um, so, uh, first and foremost, uh, I wanted to talk just a, a bit about the, uh, process that the county has used. And this is not, this is not new to the, the boards. I'm sorry for the reiteration on this, but if there are folks watching, um, who may have not seen this before, uh, one of the, the key issues, uh, that the board had focused on was making sure that we had stakeholder, uh, input associated with this process. So, uh, we did, um, multiple meetings with various stakeholders across, um, whether it's economic development, real estate, nonprofit organizations, various impacted industries, the public health sector, um, and, uh, uh, the private health industry. Um, folks who are seeing impacts on the ground and we wanted to make sure that we were hearing from those stakeholders, um, what they were, what they were hearing initially. So we, we solicited stakeholder input, uh, we vetted potential funding options and we drafted a three-year plan for, uh, board and public review. This was known as the, the concept plan. Uh, the public is able to view that, uh, plan on our website. That was submitted to the board, um, which then spurred, uh, the, uh, holding of, of public hearings uh, on the concept plan. Uh, following that, those public hearings and, uh, the additional, uh, board policy input, which we'd been receiving throughout the process through various staff meetings. Um, we then went back and revised the plan and are bringing forward today, uh, what we call the implementation plan. That implementation plan was provided to the board the latter part of last week. Uh, it is now, uh, online for public viewing as well. And I'll be going over, um, the key components of it, um, here today. So, uh, first and foremost, um, as we've indicated to the, to the board in prior staff meetings, uh, the implementation plan is divided into really, uh, two categories from a timing perspective. The first is, um, a list of programs that we would look to for what we would call immediate launch. That would be sometime during 2021, we would look to launch these programs. Uh, I'm just going to walk through them briefly. Um, but before I do, I would just indicate that the second set of programs would be programs that we require a bit more stakeholder, uh, and, uh, expert analysis and input. And I'll go over those in just a moment. Uh, but in terms of programs that we would, uh, we feel that we can get out, uh, either can or bode for, uh, getting out very quickly here. Number one is revenue replacement. Uh, the, uh, uh, the American Rescue Plan and the state local government fiscal recovery fund guidance from the Treasury Department provides, uh, uh, local governments with a formula to use to assess whether or not they are eligible for revenue replacement. We have run those, um, uh, uh, those formulas. And over the course, um, of the program, we should be el- eligible for roughly 25 million in revenue replacement. That may change, likely could go up. Uh, but nonetheless, we have categorized, uh, revenue replacement, uh, of $25 million in the plan. And that will, uh, flow through to some additional programming, um, uh, that I'll walk through, um, towards the end of the presentation here. Uh, there is, uh, uh, funding for community outreach to vulnerable populations. Um, there is 5 million allocated for that specifically. As the board is aware, we are currently contracting with UC Health for the implementation of a 513, uh, relief bus. This was what we'd formerly called the mobile tech bus, um, kicked it off a couple of weekends ago. Um, and that was done through a contract with UC Health. But the, uh, the end goal is to, um, acquire a permanent bus because the, really the idea here is to make sure that the county has a permanent means, uh, for doing outreach into the community, make sure that we're, uh, that we're touching all corners of this community and that we're hitting all the vulnerable populations, both in terms of, uh, access to, uh, things like vaccine as well as, uh, information on, uh, on health disparity. both in terms of access to things like vaccine, as well as information on, on health disparities, et cetera, and getting people in touch with the health and benefit systems that they may be missing right now. And that is a stated drive and a stated goal of, of, in the Treasury Department's guidance through this particular act. We have $3 million in here for small business assistance. I should go back just a moment to say, there may, while we have that, the, the 513 relief bus in the, in this particular category. We also imagine that there will be as well additional outreach opportunities as well. So we'll be putting together some RFPs. All, for the most part, all of these programs need to be sourced competitively according to federal guidelines. So we will be putting forth a procurement, looking for organizations that can help us with just the issue of education, marketing, and outreach, both related to the 513 relief bus, as well as just general outreach into these communities to help connect to health benefits, et cetera. As I indicated, a third, a small, we have $3 million put aside in the plan for small business assistance. This is pending a third round of small business relief that we should be launching here within the next month. We say in here that this is pending those third round results. We want to make sure that, that a, an additional round is, is in fact called for and that there is the demand for it. We also know that over the next month or, or in the immediate future, the state will be launching its program of roughly 155 million of funding to small businesses. So again, from the perspective of trying to avoid duplication, we want to see how that third round comes in, assess the state program, and then come back to the board with the recommendation. But small business assistance is something that we can roll out pretty quickly. We have a capital project allocation of 2.5 million. This came down from a recommendation initially of around 6.5 million. When we really looked at the treasury guidance and realized that a lot of the capital projects that we were planning on doing were, and that were allowed for through the treasury guidance, things to respond to COVID, et cetera. We did a lot of that through the CARES Act. So we pulled back on the capital allocation. This, at this point in time, this looks to fund a satellite facility office to assist with our outreach of county programs into communities who may not oftentimes be the recipients of those programs and may not get that information. So we want to try to find a way to leverage a, a county satellite facility towards meeting the needs and informational needs of some of our most impacted communities. But to the degree that we can accomplish that at a lower cost than the 2.5, then we would certainly look to reprogram those dollars possibly towards additional capital projects or just simply in consultation with the board if there turn out to be additional needs. We have a program of $2 million for arts and cultural assistance, similar to how we programmed our CARES Act funding. We have 1.5 million for county staffing. This would be county staffing directly involved with the implementation of this American Rescue Plan funding. We have funding for nonprofit organization assistance. We bumped that up a little bit to 6.5 million from the 5 million that was, that had been in there prior in the concept plan. We have mortgage and utility assistance. This is on top of the emergency rental assistance program to provide assistance directly to homeowners in accordance with treasury guidance. And from our perspective, at least at this point, this would enable us to also handle utility assistance. If, if people were, had taxes implicated in those mortgages, et cetera, that presuming it was a COVID-related issue that we could handle that as well through this program. We have a premium pay allocation to eligible county employees at 3 million allocated. We are still going through the process right now of working with all the county departments to better understand the, the employee job classifications that this would apply to. We then have to reconcile that with Treasury Department guidelines to make sure that we can in fact fund premium pay to that particular job classification, but we're going through that exercise right now. We have hospitality assistance to, or assistance to the hospitality industry through the CBB. This is pending treasury guidance as well. We have a specific question into the Department of Treasury as to what type of assistance can be provided to the hospitality industry, in particular to the CBB. Does it have to be directly related to marketing? Can it be operational? And the initial guidance was a little vague on that. So we are waiting for guidance from treasury on that. We have recommended 1.5 million for back office support for small businesses. This would assist small businesses with the more administrative functions associated with their craft so that they could then focus on expanding their business, generating the need for additional employees. And we also have EMA operations related to COVID-19 as well, PPE procurement. We have warehousing of vaccine and the PPE, et cetera. So this $1 million would cover those ongoing costs. And the total of that, of all those programs is 56 million. And again, we would look to get most of these programs out as quickly as possible, but sometime during 2021. The other programs are programs requiring additional stakeholder input. The goal, again, the goal is to get this, this funding into the community as quickly as possible. But these are much bigger systemic programs. We were talking internally just the other day, talking about if, if we could imagine back to before COVID. And if someone had approached the county and said, we were going to provide the county $40 million to address housing issues in Hamilton County. And you're going to get the money, but just tell us how much time you need to plan. I don't think that months or even a year of planning would have been out of the question at that point in time. But given the fact that we know that we have tremendous amount of need out there, we want to balance timing with transformational impact. So these would all be programs that we'd be looking to get, engage additional stakeholder and expert analysis on between now and the end of the year so that we would be prepared with a recommendation to the board by the beginning of 2022. None of these have changed substantively from the concept plan. We still have $30 million towards housing production and preservation. We have $10 million towards broadband infrastructure and development, both in terms of hard infrastructure and programs to address affordability. We have $8 million towards behavioral and mental health. We have $15 million towards youth employment and workforce development. $9 million towards strategic sewer and stormwater issues. $6 million to address community resiliency and health infrastructure needs, and $5 million to address homeless prevention. And finally, I do want to say we also, while we have it in the long range, the relocation of the Cincinnati Police Gun Range is certainly a long-term strategic project of the board. We just put it in this particular bin because it does involve so many different stakeholder groups from a community perspective. Lincoln Heights, the city of Cincinnati, Woodlawn, Evendale, in multiple different players, Sheriff's Office, CPD, et cetera. So we put it in the program of requiring additional stakeholder input. So all these are big pictures, systemic issues in the community totaling up to 88 million. That does leave us with a $12.7 million contingency as well, which we are holding and would recommend holding as we get additional feedback and guidance from the Treasury Department on the questions that we have asked directly. And those include things like the ability to use these dollars for debt service, the ability to allocate these dollars directly towards property tax relief. Those types of things, we have not yet received guidance from treasury on, so we would recommend holding that strategic reserve. And finally, I mentioned a bit earlier that the, that the revenue replacement funding of 25 million, ultimately, under the treasury guidance, we have the ability to funnel those dollars into additional government services, including pay-go construction projects or projects essentially cash-funded construction, capital construction projects. And we're recommending the development, planning and development and construction of a consolidated 911 EMA facility, as well as the build-out of Bank Slot 28, inclusive of a Cincinnati Black Music Walk of Fame, as the board has discussed. And as I had talked with various board offices about, holding the rest as a contingency reserve for these priority projects. These projects in particular have been prioritized by the board. We know what we've seen in terms of rising construction costs in the community. I felt at this point in time, it would be better to hold the remainder of these dollars in reserve. And if, at the end of the day, these projects come in on or under budget, we can look to reallocate these things towards things like other capital projects in the board's capital suite, parking projects that are on deck. We, I had previously recommended looking at things like parks and roads. And certainly, we could look to reprioritize or reprogram at that point in time if we have those dollars available. And finally, just in terms of the upcoming, on the long-term projects, the stakeholder or the, the upcoming stakeholder process. We are looking to bring in and preparing this RFQ at this point in time to bring in a facilitator to work with these various stakeholder groups. With the idea that we would be focusing on system gaps and needs as we've identified them over the period of COVID, over the past 18 months, or even further back for some of these big picture issues like affordable housing, with the goal of providing the board with recommendations by the end of the fourth quarter so that we could start to implement these longer-term, big-picture programs, workforce development, housing, homeless prevention, health preventative, strategic health programs by the beginning of 2022. I will say, Commissioners, as I indicated, that the public can read all about the county's ARP implementation plan and the concept plan, hamiltoncountyohio.gov. The idea was to vote on this per the board's request at the July 1st meeting. So certainly happy to answer any questions at this, at this point in time. We do have obviously a few days here before Thursday, so if there are any minor adjustments to the plan, we could certainly make them in advance of a board vote. Madam President, with that, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Jeff. Thank you for your report, and it certainly is inclusive of the ideas that we have brought forward as a commission. I did have one question, though, as we look at economic impacts addressing the housing, production and preservation. So maybe I missed it in here. I see we have 30 million. But in the back, the final summary, we have, I know we had said it would be 40 million. So I'm just.
It's, it's, it's 30 million for housing, production and preservation. And then there is an additional amount for the mortgage assistance is also included under there of 5 million, as is the 5 million. There's a recommendation for housing protection and homeless prevention at 5 million as well. So in total, those add up to 40, but they, they cover both housing, production, preservation, mortgage assistance, and then the homelessness program is, programming as well.
Right. Well, my question is, why we didn't, okay, housing, production and preservation, 30 million. Housing protection and preventing homelessness is five. So I'm just wondering why we didn't put 40 million in on that other page, even though in the back I see how it's broken down the 40 million.
I'm sorry, Madam President, which, which page are you looking at?
Well, that's what I was looking for page numbers, but if you go back to, I don't know.
I, I think the, the reason why they are not included on the same page is that one of them, the mortgage assistance, is scheduled for immediate rollout. And the, the pages are divided by immediate rollout versus longer-term programming.
Oh, it's a great format, but I'm looking at page five under address and negative economic impacts. And we have 30,000 basically for affordable housing, 20, 430, 20, 30 million. And then we have single-family affordable housing, 20 million, and then we have reinvesting 10 million, which equals 30. I'm just wondering why it doesn't equal 40. I look at the summary all the way in the back, and it is broken down as 40. So just take a look at it, Jeff. I know.
Happy to.
Yeah, the basic concept is what I'm saying is we have not reduced the amount that we want to put toward affordable housing. So that's what I'm, okay, very good, but it's, it's a great job, very clear and precise. That's the only question I had. I think it's a, a great, a great strategic plan, and we're including every element of the community. And I'm just really impressed and happy about where the board is going with the money that's been given us or where we're planning to go if we're in agreement. Vice President Reese?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Jeff, for the layout and the presentation. Very thorough, and I think I like the fact that we're breaking things down in terms of what we can do now because there's some right now needs. And then what we're going to be able to, we also get another bite at the apple on some of the things that take a little more time. But we have bucket, at least a bucket of money to go toward that. And then I also want to acknowledge that from a, from the capital side, I'm happy that you were able to put some cushion in there based on today, obviously, construction costs has gone up. Hopefully, they'll go down and it will free up some other dollars, but it won't be a situation, hopefully, that we underestimated because of lumber is more and other things are more. I was talking to Holly yesterday. She was saying, paint for the basement, basement paint went jumping up to the roof. So, you know, it seems like, you know, everything is going up and hopefully that'll stabilize. But I'm glad that you went back and said, hey, let's put some, some cushion there so that we can get these capital projects off the ground. The other thing that I want to just reiterate, Madam President, and Commissioner Dreehouse, I know we've said it before, but can't say it enough in case someone new is watching us today. Rental assistance, you know, we still have rental assistance is not coming from the American Rescue money because we, out of this pot, because we've already received money, I think, I don't know, we might have almost 20 million, but we have money. So I want to, I think Karen Bell, okay, I don't want anyone to feel like we, you know, we just don't worry about people that are rental renters. That's still there, but we're adding a component, which is the homeowners that we've heard from who may not have been added in the last group. So we have something now for helping homeowners.
Absolutely. And Commissioner, if I could just say to tag on to that, because it's a great point, and I probably didn't hit it strong enough when I was doing the presentation. But individuals, go to 513relief.org. This community collectively has a lot of resources to bring to bear on the issue of rental assistance. So if you're out there and you're listening to this and you're a renter and you have a, a need related to making sure you stay in your, in your home, please go to 513relief.org because there are resources out there to help.
Awesome. And so I just wanted to, I'm trying to think everything else that we heard. We heard from a lot of people that came and testified, and it seems like most of the concerns are in here. There'll be an opportunity for nonprofits, or a lot of nonprofits that came before us. Obviously, mental health, all of us are saying mental health and suicide prevention. There's an opportunity to get, you know, funding for that and be able to assist if you have an organization that does that as well. So, yeah, I like, I do like the format of what's being presented to us. We also, on the property tax piece, there's still an opportunity, we're waiting to hear back. But we do have some money put aside if we, if we so feel as that, stuff that we can utilize, we, we still keeps that option open. So I wanted to make sure that people knew that as well. Because you also hit on MSD, we have something, I think, utility through home ownership, utility assistance.
Yeah, so there, there is utility assistance. So if there's, first of all, the emergency rental assistance can help with utilities as well. Most ti, most times renters are not paying their sewer bill. But if, if, if someone has utility needs through the rental assistance program, they can do that. Our mortgage assistance program should be available and will be available for utility assistance as well, as will a lot of the state programming that's starting to funnel down as well. And they're beginning to set up their programming for both mortgage assistance and utility assistance. And so as those programs come online, there will be other avenues for people to, to apply for utility assistance, which would include water and sewer as well. to apply for utility assistance, which would include water and sewer as well.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Madam President, if I, if I could quickly.
Yes.
Vice President Reese hit another very good point I just wanted to, to touch on. And that is, there may be individuals who, who participated in the public process. We had a lot of great organizations that came on to provide comment. And they may be watching this or reading the plan and say, hey, I don't see our name in here. As I said earlier on, all, pretty much all of our programmatic dollars that go out in some way, shape or form have to go through some type of procurement process. So for instance, as Vice President Reese said, we have a robust network of nonprofits in this community. We have a specific program of six point five million dollars for nonprofits. So just because you're not seeing your name mentioned, we will be getting a program out very quickly here that you will be, most likely be eligible for. Again, assuming it meets the, the, the program meets the criteria. But just because you don't see your name here doesn't mean that there won't be, ultimately be a program for you, because those programs will come out a little bit later on that you'll be able to apply for.
And Jeff, that's a great comment, because I'm sure agencies, businesses are sitting on the edge of their seats right now, assuming that maybe today was the day, you know, or Thursday would be, will be the day. So thank you for that clarification on that. Commissioner Dreehouse.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. I want to just piggyback on that. So it really goes for anyone who, you spoke at our public hearings and are still looking for relief, they simply need to sign up at fiveonethree relief and get in the queue. And as, you know, the dollars become available, they get a notification as to that and they can apply. So hopefully, people, and we can make people aware of that process so that the folks that advocated for these dollars in these different categories don't miss out on the opportunity to get some of that money to help with the work that they're doing. Because I, I agree that what we heard was there's so many needs that are still present in the community. So many nonprofits are working to meet those needs, but also have needs themselves in order to do the work. So I, I'm gratified that we put a little bit more money there in response to what we heard. But, you know, in general, I just want to say, thanks to the administration. You know, I, I'm glad that we are doing this in two different ways. One is meeting the emergent need that still exists, you know, and building on what we've done in the past. But also taking a longer-range view, more strategic view of some of the things that we've heard, all of us throughout our careers, about needs in this community, particularly housing, and taking this once-in-a-career opportunity to say yes, that that is also a priority of this commission. And we are setting aside forty million dollars for the effort and doing it in collaboration with the city and other communities. So I, I am, you know, really excited about how this is going to move forward, both in the immediate future and then in the long-term plan. And Jeff, and I have had a conversation about all the different organizations that now we can partner with to inform how we move forward on things like childcare and workforce and housing and all these really long-term, important strategic things that we're investing in through this ARP plan. So I, you know, it's, it's a real opportunity for us. I know none of us would have anticipated this as we came onto the county commission, no matter when we came on. But I, I feel like we've listened and we've done a pretty good job of it, along with the help of, of course, the administration and the community helping us figure this out. So thanks again to Jeff and the staff for, for giving us this good plan.
And Madam President, if I could briefly, Commissioner Dreehouse hit on something that I did want to emphasize. And I don't plan on going into the nitty-gritty weeds on all of these programs. But we did hear so much about childcare through the, all of the public comments that I recognize that someone who might be looking at this at a high level might not be able to find it. And the concept of vetting out an approach to childcare that makes sense for the community is included within the fifteen million dollar workforce development item that we have. So that's actually workforce and youth development. But we did, it is still heavily on the center of the radar. And I just wanted folks to, to recognize that, that it may not be listed specifically, but it is included in the plan.
Thank you so much. And, you know, through the stakeholders hearings that we had, we learned about so many new organizations and agencies that are doing great things. And so I'll just have to say what both my colleagues have said. The administration just nailed it. You pulled together what the commission had asked for, what the community asked for, and you hit, hit the target. I am just so proud of, this is a people's plan. It's not about things. It's about people, and that's what we're here for. And we're putting our money where our priorities are as a board. And that just, just, just makes me feel well. And I'm sure the, my colleagues are really excited about the opportunity that we've been given and following through on that to help more people.
Madam President?
Yes.
Can I just also highlight something that, that you said, Sir Lando, and also Commissioner Dreehouse and myself. One of the things that all three of us emphasized, like you said, to make sure that some of the newer organizations or smaller or more inclusive and all of that is also in the criteria as we put those buckets together for nonprofits or arts or where we put in there or mental health, whatever those grants is. We said, hey, we also want some of the grassroots, an opportunity for grassroots organizations who are close on the ground also to be able to participate. And I know, like you said, if they, if people read it, it might be in a small print. But I just wanted them to know that that was something that all of us said, that we wanted to make sure that we put this money together and Jeff implemented it in there, that the smaller groups, like you said, also grassroots groups would also have an opportunity to get this funding and be able to help, help the community as well. So I did want to make sure that people knew about that, that we did hear you and we, we did implement that as well.
Thank you. Okay, so we'll have this on our agenda for Thursday.
It will be, it will be on for Thursday, correct?
Very good. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And I just wanted to, Madam President, thank the board for your policy guidance on this. I think the, the process to this point has been extraordinarily smooth. And from a bit of experience in, in this, that doesn't happen without very direct, specific and clear policy guidance. That makes things much easier for staff and pulling it together. We had a lot of people working really hard on this. Holly, John, Bridget, folks in various other departments, including Planning and Development, James Joy, et cetera. So a lot of people working on it, but that doesn't, we can't do our job if we don't have the clear policy guidance. And this board was very clear in terms of what it wanted in terms of the plan. So I thank you for that.
Thank you so much. So we'll move on to our next item on the agenda, Court Management System Review. Mr. Dressing is here to speak to our, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Madam President and other commissioners. I appreciate the opportunity to give you an update. And since we're handing out platitude, I did just want to say compliment the board for its leadership during the whole COVID crisis. And as well, Greg Kesterman. Had a lot of contact with the administration and with Mr. Kesterman over that time period. And it really assisted the courts in maintaining operations. And although I think we're out of the woods, we're, we're, we still have this in our rearview mirror a little bit. I'm really looking forward to being able to present to you guys in person as opposed to, through the computer. So, but thank you very much for the guidance during that time period.
Thank you.
So as indicated, I was going to give you an update with regard to the CMSNet high-level assessment. Greg Brush was on the call earlier but had to leave. And he just wanted me to let you know that, otherwise he would have been here, but he had an appointment that he needed to attend to. So I certainly do appreciate as well the commission, the commission's commitment to reviewing the countywide technology needs. I think that's a very important piece that needs to be reviewed. And I think we can see significant savings in cooperation across the county. And of course, the board did provide twenty-five thousand, five hundred dollars for the, the, the review of CMSNet. And as you may know, the courts and other justice agencies kind of have a unique partnership here. There's nine total agencies that collaborate to share their knowledge and expertise and, most importantly, resources. Several months ago, was kind of in similar timing with the creation of the IT workgroup project. CMSNet had gathered together at the request of Judge Loubers, and all of the elected officials of that group met, as well as their appointed individuals that represent them at a lot of the meetings. We all got together and we discussed maybe what we could do internally in looking at CMSNet. And shared a lot of reviews of the current system that we have. But certainly, we're aware that it's good to take a look at things introspectively and see if there are needs for improvement. And out of that was born the, the, the idea of contacting the National Center for State Courts. They're a, obviously, a national organization that provides a lot of guidance to courts. And Greg and myself and Andy Gillen, who's the Assistant Court Administrator for the Municipal Court, were given the task of reaching out to the National Center for State Courts and speaking to their knowledge area experts to try to develop a high-level review of CMSNet. We were able to do that. It's a project that's going to consist of three different phases. The first one begins here shortly with a kickoff call that will identify those individuals that will need to be contacted during the course of the investigation. And it will also center around the National Center of Understanding the Structure of CMS. And also, they will be able to request any information from us that they may need to be able to conduct their interviews and the assessment. Phase two is actually meeting with key stakeholders in person. It's a, I believe it's a three, it's two consultants traveling for approximately three days to Hamilton County to meet with those key stakeholders. And their focus will be on the functional capabilities of the system, the workflows, the technical environment, the application, excuse me, the application architecture and support issues. As indicated, nine separate agencies. We would expect that the reviewing committee would meet with at least one representative from each one of the nine justice agencies to try to get a better understanding of the complexity of CMSNet. There are a lot of moving pieces to it. There are a lot of stakeholders that are going to need to have in-depth conversations with this group. So we are hopeful that they will be able to ascertain the information they need to review the system in that three days' visit. So once they're finished collecting that information, a report will be generated. The consultants will analyze the information that we've provided along with the information that they were able to collect during the interview process. And then we will see their report where they will try to identify the strengths, weaknesses, and opportunities that present themselves, and also any areas of concern. So I'm not quite sure how long this process is going to take. As indicated, with the kickoff meeting being Thursday, I would expect it would be several weeks before they have their onsite visits with us. So not having a sense of completely how long it would take, but I, I would think probably two more months before we potentially have a report in our hands. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Sure. I was just going to ask, and I don't want to assume this, that the CMSNet is the original management system, that there's never been anything other than that.
So there was, and I'm not a historian on all of this, but there was a CMS prior to the creation of CMSNet.
Okay.
Which is a committee of nine agencies. The nine agencies, and just for information purposes, is the Court of Common Pleas, Municipal Court, the Clerk of Courts, the First District Court of Appeals, Domestic Relations, Juvenile Court, Private Court, the County Prosecutor and the Public Defender. Back in, I believe it was two thousand and six, those agencies, those courts came together and formed CMSNet in two thousand and six. So, so there was a system in, in place, but it wasn't enhanced. And the collaboration really didn't occur until two thousand and six.
Well, thank you so much. So we know since two thousand and six, many things have changed since then. So, okay, thank you so, yeah. Thank you so much. I'll open it up for any questions or comments from my colleagues, Vice President Reese.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. Thank you for the update and the presentation and giving us kind of where we're going with this. Actually, this was brought to attention, my attention, from Judge Danae Trotter Bratton. She had indicated that there was a grant, I guess the Ohio Supreme Court justices had talked about a possible grant toward these efforts. And certainly, I know there's a lot of groups and organizations as they talk about criminal justice reform, making sure that we have the right data, that the data is updated. And obviously, with technology, we all know that updating and, and having the best is, is what we need. So I just want to thank you for that. I'm not sure if she, is she on this committee?
So there were discussions with Judge Russell, who's presiding judge. And yes, Judge Trotter Bratton has joined us at the most recent CMSNet Steering Committee meeting. And my counterpart, Mr. Gillen, did follow up with Judge Trotter Bratton. And I believe they had a really good conversation. There are a lot of moving pieces right now, Commissioner Reese. At a state level, there is the, the uniform sentencing entry that is in progress. That's going to collect a lot of the information, justice information of which you're speaking about. And we'll pull everything together on a statewide basis. We do have other judges that are involved in that process. And it really should be a top-down model. It's something that is, is going to take a lot of resources. And the Supreme Court has certainly made it known that this is a top project that they have. And us stepping out to try to do something on our own could be a very difficult and expensive enterprise. I do know that the uniform sentencing, sentencing entry will bring a lot of that forth. And it's something that's moving really rapidly across the state. So, and to your point about the grant, we did apply for grants, technology grants through the Supreme Court. We were given one in relation to the Clerk of Courts redaction program, which will allow, as you may know now, if you go onto the Clerk of Courts website, if you're not an attorney or have other access, you can see minimal information. You can't see a lot of documents because it might expose a social security number or other private information that shouldn't be in the general public domain. This redaction program will allow Mr. Puraval to show all of those documents and provide, you know, more transparency to the public. That was, I believe, a two-hundred-thousand-dollar grant that we received for that. And the Court of Common Pleas was awarded an approximate hundred-thousand-dollar grant to update the jury management software, which will provide some innovation there as well. And then finally, Municipal Court had applied for a grant and received one as well, over one-hundred-thousand dollars, related to a lot of equipment needs. So the, if you follow along with the Supreme Court grants, we were very excited to get all of the grants that we applied for. We have applied for other grants in the past and haven't been provided them. And I think what the Supreme Court does is they, they have a grid where they will rank the awards to the different jurisdictions. And oftentimes, they'll focus on a certain area of the courts, like maybe security and equipment upgrades and things like that. And oftentimes, you'll see those grants go to other jurisdictions that have a difficult, they don't quite have the resources that Hamilton County does. So it might be some of the other smaller counties that receive those funds. We have received other Supreme Court technology grants in the past. And coming into this last grant season, I was concerned that us having received those grants in prior years might have affected our ability to get them this year. So very happy with those grants. It's fortunate in these difficult economic times to be able to supplement the needs of the court. And in turn, the county budget by being able to use those funds in a much-needed way.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Dreehouse.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Mr. Dressing, for being here. Appreciate it. And thanks for the update. You know, I think this is a very high priority for obviously the courts and all the systems related to the courts, but also for the county commission as we think about, you know, investments and how to better deliver services really to the people in the community. And so I'm glad that you are very excited. It's complicated. And technology is not my best space. So anybody that knows me would tell you the same. However, it is so important that we get moving on this and update these systems so that they can talk to one another and they can run more efficiently for internal purposes, but also for the public, as you noted. So thanks again for the update. I am grateful for it and will look forward to hearing from you again.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for coming forward and informing us.
Okay. You guys have a wonderful day. Thank you.
You too. Thank you. Does anybody need a quick break? Well, unless I don't. I think we can make it through. Yeah. Can I just make a comment? Jeff, you're going to bring up about the concept that I had as it relates to ARP, the Child Support Amnesty Program, that I was wondering if we could look into that deals specifically with those people that have been working and lost their jobs or laid off or their businesses were cuffed or, and that they were paying child support religiously or on time, but due to the lack of income, were not able to proceed and continue child support. And so their arrears continues. So Jeff, can you speak to that?
Yeah, Madam President, I apologize for that. And yet, there was, in fact, as we received policy guidance from the board, we did our best to try to make sure that we included all of those items in the recommended implementation plan that we could get through and vet. And as always happens, there were things in each commissioner's slate that we just couldn't get to. Either, there didn't appear to be consistent board policy direction on it, or we just couldn't vet the item out appropriately enough. So one of those, for instance, is the issue of property taxes, which we ultimately left some money for, but we didn't include anything in the plan because we have a treasury question out there. One of the items from Commissioner Summer DuMoss's office was the issue of child support amnesty, as was just described. And we are talking with Job and Family Services about that. There are some complexities from a legal perspective that we want to work through, that we need to work through. And as we get that addressed and get some answers to that, we'd be happy to bring it back to the board for a more thorough discussion and see where the board might want to go to it, I think, or go with it. As I didn't really say in our, in the discussion of the ARP plan, but as the board remembers from the CARES Act and Vice President Reese would even see this year, as you've been working with the CARES Act, we can allocate these dollars to the best of our ability right now. Almost without question, there will be dollars that shake out later on down the road as different programs are implemented and we don't use the full amount. So there will be opportunities for shifting some funding around, using dollars that come available, et cetera. We included a contingency. So I have no fear at this point that any idea that comes up within the next couple of months that is a really good one will be overly crowded out, assuming it's of a financial magnitude that we can manage. So we're still doing research on that particular item. I'm happy to bring it back in the next month or two for some additional discussion.
Okay. Thank you. I just know you said you were going to bring it up and I don't want to.
Yeah, I apologize for that. I meant to actually include a portion of of my talk around different areas that we were not able to get to. There had been some discussion, even things like lead pipes and things of that nature that we did not include, but I did not get to that in my presentation. But thank you for the reminder.
Okay. And my major concern is that I don't drop it on the commissioners two months from now, and that's the first time they heard about it. So that's why I brought it up now. So, okay, thank you. I appreciate it. Not to belabor, because we've been here a while, but I wanted you guys to know about if you didn't know about it. So item number six is Mount Washington Source Control Project. Diana Christie is on the line, has been on the line. Director Ryan Welch is already here also. So hi, Diana.
Hello. Good afternoon, Madam President and Commissioners. Yes, we are last on the agenda, and I'm sure you all are tired, but thank you for having us. I think what I have today is a pretty, and yes, I have Ryan Welsh, our Deputy Director and Chief Engineer, joining me today. And we're just going to give you a brief update about this project. If you may recall, we were here last summer to talk about this because this project has been in the design phase. The board approved design funding for MSD for this project in 2019. But we encountered some roadblocks and we paused that effort last summer and did some additional planning. So we're going to give you a quick update on where we're at and where we need to go. I do have just a few slides that I think will keep us on schedule, if I can share them. Let's see. My screen did something weird, so.
There it is.
Is it showing up for you all?
Yes.
There you go. It's just I'm on my other screen, so let me just get it to play. And where should we get to go? There we go. Okay. So let me just jump in. Again, this should be pretty quick, but I do want to remind you what this is about. So this project is in Mount Washington, but this really started as, this is a few streets in the Mount Washington neighborhood that were having recurring sewer backups. So at one point in time, you know, we've had up to 60 properties that have been affected with sewer backups. It is a combined sewer neighborhood, and this started about 10 years ago. This is, and as we've discussed before, an area where the solution to this problem was complicated, in large part by the sheer number of properties affected, but also just the conditions there and the topography. So that's really, you know, what this initially started as. The project, though, as it has been conceived and really kind of developed, it is not just to solve those sewer backups at those homes, but also it's intended to be compatible with and fit into a larger consent decree project, which is the combined sewer overflow there, which is combined sewer overflow number 182, where we have an outfall in the creek nearby that this neighborhood discharges into. So I'll get in and explain that in just a moment here. But just kind of to, again, give you a little bit of the background on what we have discussed before, that this project, we have a very involved community here. Obviously, they were impacted multiple times, had significant damage to their homes, so they've been, of course, very interested in getting these sewer backups resolved. And they've also been pretty organized. We've had various community meetings as we propose different solutions. And in particular, there's a few of the residents that have been actively engaged with our project team and just, you know, really getting a lot of recent updates and providing feedback to us all along the way. We started with an SBU strategy, you know, and the typical SBU strategy is a sewer backup prevention device that is a property-by-property approach. In many ways, that was not feasible here due to the, again, the sheer number. We would be pushing this problem downstream. We then developed a pilot that coupled that sewer backup prevention program at the houses with additional work at the properties themselves to separate the stormwater with some green infrastructure on those homes. That pilot was really not well-received by the community. There was, it was seen to be too disruptive and focused on their property instead of new public infrastructure. So we went back and planned a new project, which is where we were heading last summer, which was to build stormwater infrastructure in the street that doesn't exist today. So this is, these streets only have a combined sewer. So we were going to construct stormwater infrastructure and we were going to oversize that and provide for in-pipe storage so that we could hold the water for a long enough time in this neighborhood so that it could be released back into our combined sewer without causing additional backups. As we presented last summer while we were designing this, so we moved from the planning to the more detailed design where you really get into the underground work, we discovered that the utilities in this area and just where we had to work with this really presented too many challenges to proceed with that original design. Putting in an oversized system where we already had a network of pipes and underground utilities was not only expensive, but it presented even more property disruption than we had, you know, than we had wanted and what we knew the community would accept. So we also, at that point in time when we discussed this last summer, we also received some feedback from the county team to not only address the SBUs in the neighborhood, but also to see if this project could reduce the combined sewer overflows that ultimately result in this watershed by really tying this project to the larger consent decree or WIP project that was part of our phase two, was part of the county's phase two. So again, what we did was we paused the design and really went back and did some additional planning work. And as a result, the project is an expanded area, but it resolves more than what we were resolving before. So we're now looking at the neighborhood plus the downstream work that would be necessary to achieve the WIP compliance. In doing that, we created two phases, or we're looking at this as two phases. Phase one was not just the neighborhood, and I'm going to jump to the next slide so we can look at what we're talking about here. It is the neighborhood that we were previously looking at, plus some of the downstream work. And then a phase two would be finishing this and getting to the CSO. So just quickly to orient you, this is the Mount Washington neighborhood on the east side of Cincinnati, down in the Little Miami watershed, near our Little Miami wastewater treatment plant, which is by Lankan Airport. This is a close-up look at the neighborhood that has the SBU problem. So again, there's about three streets here with, you know, several, many homes that have been affected. The, go to the next one. So this is from our new planning effort where we aren't just looking at, and if my cursor shows up for you, this is the original scope of work just to address the SBUs where this red is, and it's almost like a backwards E. So we had storm infrastructure that was going to then just be connected back into the combined sewer at the end of that street. We're now proposing to build that storm infrastructure. And I think I skipped over one key technical component, which is while we're still building stormwater infrastructure, we are not building it to store the stormwater. So it is not this enlarged pipe. It is a much smaller stormwater pipe that wouldn't cause the same conflicts that we were doing before. So in order to do that, we have to bring the flow further down to our combined sewer where we have capacity in it. And that's why we've expanded the project to solve the same problem. You can see in the green is where ultimately this project will connect all the way down to, will go all the way down to the combined sewer overflow that has to be reduced to achieve our consent decree compliance. So we have a new business case evaluation, which is our planning report. And that report really just focuses on tying the phase one project to the larger CSO project. And really ensuring that as a whole, we will be achieving the goals of the WIP project. And just a couple more slides quickly. We just want to point out that the, you know, as I said before, this neighborhood, all of our combined sewer and sewer backup issues that we have are complicated. They're all somewhat unique. But this one, really, we're no easy, there's really no easy solution to this area. In large part, it's somewhat the topography, and this is a combined sewer area, but this is the upstream, in a sense. There's nothing else further upstream that could be, you know, addressed, that this is all the rainfall that is coming into this neighborhood and just getting into this sewer through the inlets in the streets primarily and somewhat from the homes. And we have looked at, we believe, really every way to solve this problem. And they're really just, you know, there isn't a simple solution or we would have completed it by now. We think that this is the most cost-effective. It's also the least disruptive to the community. And that's why we want to continue with the design efforts. We do still have, there's always unknown site conditions, but we know a lot more. And, you know, as we go back into the design phase, we believe we're prepared to address those without having to hold anything up again. Perhaps larger, and I'm saying it's a risk, but I think really, just in terms of the timetable here, we typically allow for up to two years for any property acquisition, and we had tried to avoid this. It seems unavoidable. However, we are working on a response plan or a mitigation plan with our team to really start that much earlier. We do have a design where we're not looking at the type of property acquisition that we think would be difficult, but we never know. I mean, so this is, you know, things where we're adjacent to the street. We just need very small easements. Some of them are temporary easements. So I think, you know, our hope is that we will accelerate this. We will start it very soon and we will complete it in an accelerated timeframe so that once the design is complete, we're not waiting, you know, for a year or longer. Really, this would be at most, I would think, a year and a half, but I'm hopeful that it's more of like a six-month timeframe. But, you know, that's just not something we have full control over. In the worst-case scenarios, we have to go to the courts to appropriate property. So those are pointing out, and right now, I just really just wanted to be clear, our next steps and why we're here today. Again, the board appropriated design funding in 2019. We are not here seeking additional funding. We paused the work. We are now prepared to move forward with the same firm. We have funds available both in the project and in project contingency or program contingency. So we're really just, you know, here to answer questions and address any concerns you may have. But that would be our preference is to just keep moving ahead. And we also have committed to meet with the community to set up a public meeting. And I think they're all, you know, very interested in understanding where we're at. They've waited a long time. And I know they're eager to hear, you know, when this will be completed. So we're looking to meet with them possibly, you know, in the next month. And again, as I mentioned, we would begin the, that's the right-of-way acquisition process as soon as possible. I also put on here, just to be clear, we're only designing phase one right now. When design of phase two, before design of phase two commences, we would come to the board for funding approval for that. So it will likely be in the CIP, but that would be a separate request. And of course, the project wouldn't proceed to construction until we come back to you with our request for construction funding. So I think that is it for what I wanted to share today, and I just want to answer any questions. And again, I have Ryan Welsh, if you want to dig in on any of the technical stuff.
You're muted. Commissioner Drees.
Thank you so much, Diana. And I'm sure you do it on most of your, thank you, Commissioner Dreehouse, on most of your projects, but it's very obvious that you were cognizant of being the least intrusive of the private property and that you might have to have some private property people to agree with what you're doing. So I really liked that in the process and really the first time that I've seen it, but I'm sure you do that. We try to make sure that our clients or our people in the community feel good about it. And as you were saying, they're And as you were saying, they've been waiting a while for this to happen. So thank you so much. So as I looked at the diagram, you don't have to go back, but that smaller pipe then that goes into the stormwater is really just a pass-through. It's not collecting any of the, the bigger sewer is at the end, as you designated in the diagram, correct?
Everything that we'll be constructing for this would be a storm sewer, so it will only be collecting the rainwater. And we're no longer building a larger stormwater, really, storage system essentially underground.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Reese.
Thank you, Madam President. I don't have any questions. I'm interested. I know you said you'll be going to the community, so interested in hearing their feedback on the project.
Thank you.
I know in the past, we've had these community meetings, you know, if either you, Commissioner Reese, or your staff would like to attend, we'll make sure we share that information in advance.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Drehouse.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks, Diana. Thanks, Ryan, for being here. So this has been a long, gosh, I don't remember when the public hearing was that I attended. It's been years ago, hasn't it? Two years or so. So, yeah, glad that this is moving right along here. So I have a question, and I don't know, you didn't mention it. So I have a question about kind of a policy question, really, related to the build. So is this project, what level your storm is this anticipated to address in this project?
I can answer that, and it's a...
I was gonna kick it to you, Ryan.
Slightly complicated answer. So the stormwater infrastructure that we're building will be designed to handle a 10-year storm, and that's consistent with what SMU requires and kind of industry standards for stormwater. The project itself will not increase combined sewer overflows 25-year event. So you have 10-year event for the stormwater infrastructure. As a result of this project, we're designing it so that it won't create additional overflows into the combined sewer in a 25-year, 24-hour event. And finally, we're making sure that we design it so that the homes, you know, the reason we're doing it in the first place, will not experience backups into their basements in a, I think it's, the 2016 storm was a 200-year, three-hour event and maybe a 100-year, and I'm not sure about the timeframe, but it's significantly higher than that 10-year and 25-year, you know, for the other aspects of the design. So it's not one number that I can share, but those are the design criteria that we're using.
So then to the policy question related to that. So can I ask you why the 100-year, 200-year, whatever it is, as opposed to the 10-year? And related to that, is it something that we are looking to do in other places in the future? Or I'm confused as to why we were not sticking to the 10-year. And if we're not, I'm not arguing the point necessarily. I just want to better understand this shift and if we intend to, you know, look at that kind of thing in the future.
So it's not so much a shift, and we're not changing the standard. You know, when we build stormwater infrastructure, when the, when, you know, the county engineer's office or any utility builds stormwater infrastructure, they'll build for a 10-year event. That's what we're doing. The assurance to the residents that, you know, what happened to them in 2016 won't happen again is really a result of the other design constraints, you know, the 10-year sizing of infrastructure for a 10-year, 24-hour storm and sizing of the project itself so that we won't increase CSOs in a 25-year, 24-hour storm. So the assurance to the homeowners is really a result of the other design parameters, and it's not really changing the standard which we designed. So, you know, if we were doing another project, another part of the county, I'm not sure that you would compare and, you know, pull out what happened in 2016. That's just what we're able to tell this group of homeowners as we move forward with this design. And I think there was probably some confusion when this was presented originally that made it appear like we were somehow changing our design standards. But hopefully, that's, hopefully, that's an explanation.
Yeah, well, that is kind of what I'm getting at. And let me ask another question related to that. Even if we were to be constructing something that was for, as opposed to a 10-year storm event, 50-year storm event, say, I assume that impacts the cost or...
Yeah, it really does.
I mean, wouldn't we always want to design something, you know, for the longer timeframe if it were to provide a benefit to the community but not be cost prohibitive? And so that's kind of one thing I'm wondering about. And then the other question then becomes, how do we provide a standard response to every community when they have similar kinds of situations? So that's kind of what I'm getting at. So the answer to the first question is yes, the cost would go up if we were to build a system that would address a longer timeframe.
Yeah, and it's, our bare minimum has to be the industry standards of 10-year, 10-year, 24-hour event for stormwater. And depending on the topography and the existing infrastructure and the feasibility, you might end up with building something that results in a higher level of protection. But it's not a one-size-fits-all, and it really, we can't guarantee a higher level for those reasons. It just, it varies by location. And that's not what we're, we're not out there trying to build everything bigger or to reach a higher standard. But when, you know, when we can do it, we try to make it work as well as we can and provide as high a level of protection as we can without spending additional money.
Okay, thank you.
I just wanted to add to Commissioner Drehouse's question. I mean, Ryan answered everything, I think, very well. And this is really more of a non-technical kind of policy side of it. I think this project is not a standard, I mean, this project was really initially driven by the sewer backups and the consent decree requirement that, once you have two or more sewer backups, we would install something, and we call it our sewer backup prevention program or the SPUPP. And typically, those are, you know, a device on the line that goes to the home, which in most cases completely prevents an SBU for that property. So there are some policy issues around what the sewer backup prevention program requires from a protection standpoint, because if we were to always just install those, you know, yes, it might mean 100% protection for that person, but it is causing larger issues for their neighbors or downstream. So in this case, you know, we started with the sewer backup prevention program, which means really, you know, people are expecting us to get rid of the problem entirely. And that's really, you know, I think it's unreasonable for us to think we can do that without impact somewhere else in most cases. So we're looking at, you know, this is, we're looking at this in other areas as well, kind of the cumulative effect of the sewer backup prevention program as it was initially conceived. Because we can, you know, we can solve this neighbor's problem, but we perhaps created a problem downstream. And I think, you know, I know that the commissioners wouldn't want to be doing that as a matter of policy. So it's somewhat in conflict with how that requirement and that program was initially set up. And that's part of what we've been really digging into in our sewer backup program from the pilot standpoint, where you funded some money earlier this year. So this is a unique project in that respect, in that we, instead of doing single-property solutions, we designed an engineering solution, and we're tying it into a WIP project. And we're achieving what the residents want, which is, this isn't going to happen to us again. I mean, could you get more than what they had in 2016 at some point in time? You know, yes, there's no guarantee. The weather is, you know, changing and unpredictable. But, you know, that's what they're expecting, and that's what we're delivering, I believe.
Yeah, I guess, just to follow up, I guess, the idea that when one of these devices is installed, there's an impact somewhere else would be true of any place you install, you know, one of the devices. And so I guess, I just, moving forward, I would hope to better understand when we've got a situation, I'm not arguing that it needs to happen. I mean, I think the longer-term, larger, you know, as it addresses more than one issue is probably the right way to go here. It does seem like a policy question, though, to me. And, you know, I want to make sure that there's just consistency in our approach here as we deliberate, what is the best solution for one situation, one neighborhood, a different situation, another neighborhood, knowing that there are going to be impacts, no matter what we do. And so I just want to, you know, make sure that, I just want to personally understand this, because I went out there for the public hearings. I'm familiar with this issue. But I'm also familiar with issues in other communities and want to make sure that if this is a new direction, perhaps, that we fully understand it and that we are kind of moving down the road together. So that's, I just wanted, that's the reason I'm asking for the clarity.
Thank you. And I agree with you, Commissioner Drehouse, because this is the first time since I've been on commission that I've heard it's said that it would be for a 10-year event. And as Ryan was saying, it depends on the project and how large a project is. But when it was said 10-year event, that was something different. I've heard 50 and 100 years. And so it was a little different for me also. Phase Two, that you said you wanted to start in 2022, would that also be for a 10-year event?
The stormwater portion, and we would also look at the combined sewer overflow. So you're, we have multiple standards that we designed to, obviously. So we want to prevent combined sewer overflows, and that might be at a 25 or 50. But water infrastructure would be built for a minimum of a 10-year, 24-hour event.
So I guess my question for Phase Two, do you already know what event you're going to clean this stuff up or continue the project for Phase Two? Is for a 25-year event, a 10-year event? Have you already?
Yeah, the planning for that would be consistent with this first phase.
Okay.
A year for the stormwater, 25-year for the overflow. We haven't done the design yet, so, but that is the basis of what we would do the design for.
So it'd be about the same, okay. Okay, so I agree with Commissioner Drehouse that if it is, it sounds to me a little bit of a policy change. I could be wrong, but if we can be clear on that, then we'll communicate more about that. So Holly, did you want to say something as relates to that?
Good afternoon. Thank you, Madam President. I would just like to suggest, based on the conversation, if it would be helpful if Director Christie and Ryan and a couple members of the county team could clarify some of these issues for the board over the next week and provide additional details for you in terms of the policy, potential policy implications, if that would be helpful.
That would be very helpful. Okay, thank you. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay, are there any additional comments from our, my colleagues? Looks like there are none. I'd like to make a comment myself that our next meeting will be July the 1st. It will be right here at the Todd B. Portune Center for County Government. We'll start at 1 o'clock. That's 138 East Court Street on the sixth floor. All are welcome to come. We're looking forward to seeing the public here and the media and everyone who's interested. And July the 1st will be the day that we vote on the American Rescue Plan. So that may be a reason that you might want to come in also. But we would love to see you. Looking forward to July the 1st. Thank you all. At this point, I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Thank you.
Summer Dimas?
Yes.
Ms. Reese?
Yes.